Welcome to the July 15 Hutchinson City Council Meeting. Please call, roll.
Richardson.
Here.
Garza.
Here.
Fast.
Here.
Magers.
Here.
Goss.
Here.
Fledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
My name is Victor Half Moon. I'm a pastor of Legacy Bible Church here in town and also a one of the chaplains at the Hutchinson Correctional Facility. Let's pray. Father, we come before your throne of grace this evening. We lift up this meeting. Lord, we ask that you would just give wisdom, pour your wisdom out in the measure of your grace to each council member that's here. Lord, give them unity. May they have a common purpose and and we just ask that you would guide them as they discuss the issues of this community and that their decisions and their direction might would be beneficial to each member of this community and to the families that are represented. And Lord, we ask that you would provide for the needs of every person that's here tonight, council members and guests alike, that, Lord, you know every need perfectly and and we ask you to work in each person's life and in their family and provide for needs, whether they are for health, business, finance, family issues, whatever it might be, and that you would meet those needs perfectly according to your timing and and your desires. And we ask these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you. Before we move on, could I get somebody from the tech room to come out here, please? I think the TV audio is on back there. Test, 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 test. While he fixes that, next item, please.
Item number four, Proclamations, Emancipation Day and Parks and Recreation Month.
If you are here for the Emancipation Proclamation, please join me at the podium. Stay right here, so you're in the in the shot. Whereas the Emancipation Celebration in Hutchinson is the commemoration of liberation enacted because of the Abolition Act in August 1834, the Emancipation Celebration has been maintained in Hutchinson for over 135 years. And whereas a constant struggle has been ongoing to accomplish the goals of that proclamation, to bring true freedom to an oppressed people and give life to the possibility that freedom for all could be achieved. And whereas in 1936, the Emancipation Proclamation Day Celebration Committee, a nonprofit organization, was organized in Hutchinson to arrange proper and fitting activities in honor of emancipation. And whereas Emancipation Day is a celebration of freedom, recognition of identity, and commitment to solidarity to with any whose pursuit of life, liberty, and happiness is infringed, now therefore I, Stacy Goss, Mayor of the City of Hutchinson, Kansas, do hereby proclaim August 1, 2025, as Emancipation Day.
Good evening. My name is Will Miller. I'm the president of Emancipation. I'd just like to go over our agenda for the first three days in August. This is 136 years this year. Starting Friday, we have Fun Night at 5:00 PM at ACC Center Park, 1500 North Plum. All their location is changing this year from where they've been, so I've got to make sure everybody knows where they're at, so you all can come out. We have a three-point shootout at 6:00 PM at the YMCA, that's 716 East 13. And then at 8:00, we have Jazz in the Park at HCC Central Park. And then Saturday, we start off with the parade. We're going to line up on north on Main Street down to B and 12. Everyone's welcome. We do judge for the floats, first, second, third price. Hundred dollars for first, 75 for second, and 50 for third. Everyone's invited. If you don't want to float, just come out and be a part of. Everybody's welcome. Then on at noon, we have the wards and the grand marshal assembly at the ACC Final Art Building. That's at noon. Free lunch. Everybody come out. Then at 12:30, we have a family community picnic at the Gala Theater at lawn of 600 East 11. Everything over in the cause in the college area. And then at 9:00 PM, we have the dance, and that's going to be at the Knights of Columbus this year at 1200 West 15. We don't sell alcohol, but you can bring your own. You've got to be 21 to get in. We checking, I'm checking IDs and putting braces on because prior years, we had issues. So everybody can be safe and have fun. And then on Sunday, August 3, we have the Gospel Effects at the ACC Final Art as well, and then follow with the ice cream social at the theater. Everybody come out and be a part of. Thank you.
Next is National Parks and Recreation Month. Whereas Parks and Recreation is an integral part of communities throughout this country, including the city of Hutchinson and Reno County, and whereas Parks and Recreation promotes health and wellness, improving the physical and mental health of people who live near parks, and promotes time spent in nature, which positively impacts mental health and well-being, as well as alleviating illnesses. And whereas Parks and Recreation encourages physical activities by providing space for sports, hiking trails, swimming pools, and many other activities designed to promote active lifestyles. And whereas Parks and Recreation is a leading provider of healthy meals, nutrition services, and education, and park recreation programming and education activities, such as out-of-school time programming, youth sports, and environmental education, which are critical to childhood development. And whereas Parks and Recreation increases a city's, a community's economic prosperity through increased property values, expansion of the local tax base, increased tourism, the attraction and retention of businesses, and crime reduction. And whereas Parks and Recreation is fundamental to the environmental well-being of our community, and our parks and natural recreation areas ensure the ecological beauty of our community and provide a space for children and adults to connect with nature and recreate outdoors. And whereas the U.S. House of Representatives has designated July as Parks and Recreation Month, and the City of Hutchinson recognizes the benefits derived from Parks and Recreation service resources. Now therefore I, Stacy Goss, Mayor of the City of Hutchinson, Kansas, do hereby proclaim the month of July 2025 as National Parks and Recreation Month.
Good evening. Justin Combs, Director of Parks and Facilities. First, I just want to say thank you to City Council for your ongoing support of parks in our community. Over the past year or year and a half, we've partnered with a company called Placer AI. They use cell phone data to track visitations to different places. It's primarily used in the retail market, and we can also use it for public spaces. And I'm working on a fairly large report that's going to talk about or show visitation to all our parks. But I thought I'd give you just a sneak peek today. And so I've developed a list of our top 10 most visited parks in the city. And let me define what a visit means. A visit means somebody that's in a park for seven minutes or more. So and it could be multiple visits. So for instance, Mayor Goss has probably been to Cary Park 100 times in the past year. That counts as 100 visits, not just a single visitor. So so these are the numbers all. So that's what's representative in these numbers for the top 10 parks. So number 10 is Farmington Park, 14,300 visits in the past year. Number eight, Elmdale Park, 20,000 visits. Number or number nine was Elmdale. Number eight is Fairgrounds, 27,100. Number seven is Grandview Park, 28,600. Number six is Dylan Nature Center, 40,800. Number five is Fun Valley Sports Complex, 56,400. Number four, Shattuck, Shattuck Park, 63,000. Now the numbers start to get a little ridiculous. Number three is Rice Park, 138,500 visits in the past 12 months. Number two is Orchard Park, 161,700 visits in the past year. So obviously, the number one, probably everybody can guess, is Cary Park. This number's pretty amazing. I've looked this up multiple times to think, did I do something wrong in the system? Because the number is really, really impressive. I've compared this number to parks all across the state, and I'll make that comparison in my larger presentation. This number becomes even more oppressive when I compare it to other parks. But over the last full 12 months, there's been 730,600 visits to Cary Park. So pretty impressive when you think we're a community of 40,000. Like I said, I've compared this to parks in Wichita, Johnson County, and it's, I've always said Cary Park's the best park in the state. This really actually proves it that it's within the top two or three. So again, thank you for your support of our parks. And I think it's sometimes it's hard to realize how often and how important parks are to our community. And hopefully, this full full report will put that more to perspective. But I just wanted to give you just a sneak peek on what those numbers look like. So again, thank you.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Item number five, petitions, remonstrances, and oral communications from the audience.
This is the public comment section. If anybody would like to address the council on items not on the agenda, please limit your remarks to five minutes. And please come to the podium.
Hello, my name's Don Byler, and I was here July 1 asking you about pickleball at the Fairgrounds Courts. I guess this falls into the month of Parks and Recreation. I didn't know it was going to happen. But anyway, since then, I thought I'd update you. We talked about trying to get all eight courts tripped. Well, now, through progress through people that play pickleball and so forth, we've come up with suggestions how what to do and so forth. They've suggested six and four. We've come down to even a suggestion of making two courts and four dedicated pickleball courts, which would be great because we don't have anything that's dedicated just to pickleball. I know Rice Park was started, never finished, which it would be nice if it had been, but we're to the point after seven, eight years, we have people that are asking. The good thing about it, we could turn two tennis courts into four pickleball courts. We still have six dedicated. Another good thing is it doesn't cost the city a dime. We have the funding to do it. I have people in the last week or so saying, hey, we've got the money. We can do it. We're not talking a whole lot of money, but we do have it. We could turn those two courts into four dedicated pickleball courts. That's all we're asking. Just somewhere. We've got plenty of places during the day. We've got the sports arena. We have Elmdale, Yoder. We have all sorts of places during the day. But the evening, you get off work at 5:36, where can you play pickleball? Nowhere. There's nowhere in town. Rice Park, it was a good beginning, never got finished, but we can do something to improve the recreation in the area. There are scabs of people, I don't know. We have some in the audience that play pickleball. We have more that are here tonight. I have, I think the one time I looked on my list, there were still over 200 names. So we'd like in consideration of adding some courts somewhere. And like I say, we have the money. We have the manpower to do it. It's just up to the city to say, yes, take two courts, make them into four. That still leaves six courts there for tennis, plus four at the high school. That should be plenty, I'd think. But anyway, that's what I'd bring you up to date on, what we're doing. So thank you.
Thank you. Next person, please. Seeing then, we will move on to the next item.
Item number six, Consent Agenda.
Any discussion from council? I would like to note that item D on the consent agenda is in four days. The statute or the ordinance, I don't know what you call it, Paul, requests that these requests are put in 60 days in advance. Is that correct? Enrico, can you tell us, is there a burden placed on staff by requests that are received late?
There definitely is a
Of this nature?
There definitely is a burden placed on staff, whether it's late or truthful, even on time, just depending on the scope of the event. You know, whether it's requests for PD presence or public works personnel to set up traffic barricades, things like that. But the later that these come in, we definitely have to cram it in if we want to be able to pull it off. So in communications that I've had with Paul and other staff, that we shoot for 60, that's ideal, so we can properly plan for that. But hopefully, we can get even 30 on some of these. People just apply late.
When did this one come in?
Paul, do you know?
Two weeks ago.
I can tell you why it was late. There was a cancellation of a concert that Logan Mize was now available for, or now had an open date. And so Salt City wanted to have the show and called me and asked me if we could do it. And and I reminded them that this continually happens, like at the last minute, all these things, and was promised that it would be improved in the future. I know that we've approved two of these at the last minute, not just for Salt City, but one for the motorcycle event. And and we made that happen. And I have no problem trying to make that happen. But to your point, it is a burden on staff, and we at some point probably need to say, we have to plan better. But in this case, there was a cancellation of another concert that left an open date for the gentleman that's going to perform Friday, I think. So there's a little bit more to that story. But there's always a story. So.
If they would have had their, if this wouldn't have happened, would they have had it in time if they hadn't had the date changed?
Well, I have no idea. I don't think there was any intention of bringing him in. It was a last-minute deal. I think there was a cut rate maybe on the event, and it was a full band. It wasn't just him doing an acoustic set. So that's the story I got behind the scenes. So that might answer some of your questions on this particular event.
It's kind of a double-edged sword because these types of events, because alcohol is served, they do support the nonprofits, just like we saw at the last meeting. So and I assume there will be a lot of beer sold at this concert in particular. So I know that's probably Mr. Peterman's goal. So I think the saving grace for me is that this is essentially a repeat of his events in the past, and he has a good track record, from my understanding of having good events, even though he is crap at paperwork. So I guess we can let this one slide again. Any additional discussion from council?
There is one more thing maybe we could discuss at some point, and that is the paying, the the event people have to pay for police, and they also have to pay for their own security. And the thought is, why, why are we paying for both? So just putting that out there, I don't think that needs to happen tonight. But it does, it makes me think a little bit. It's like, well, one or the other, maybe. So.
Yeah, I think that's an important conversation to have at a future time when there isn't a pending event that would be impacted by a decision change.
Certainly. I'd move to approve the consent agenda and authorize the mayor to sign.
Second.
Richardson.
Yes.
Garza.
Yes.
Fast.
Yes.
Magers.
Yes.
Goss.
Yes.
Item number seven, public hearing. Public hearing to consider condemnation of an unsafe and dangerous structure at 2100 South Bone Grace Street.
Do you want us to open a public hearing?
Good evening, council. Jason Lady, building official. Before we open this public hearing, I would like to note, yeah, my staff report, and staff recommends that City Council remove this item from the agenda and allow staff sufficient time to engage with the new property owner, their agents, lien holders, and any current occupants. This will afford due process to the new owner. The the property was transferred. So it does have a new owner. We did not get fully into the process of all the the issues with the property maintenance codes still stand with the property as they are today. However, it is a new owner, and we'd like sufficient time for that for that due process, for that new owner to be able to clean up the property.
When was the property sold?
What's that?
When was the property sold?
Um, I don't recall exactly the day. It's only been probably about a month or so, maybe a month and a half.
We don't have a choice on this. It's just due process and.
When do you anticipate this would be back before the council?
Um, you know, staff's going to go out to the site again, take a look at it. We'll give that typical 30 days for our property maintenance violations. They're working on the property out there as it stands right now, and have done a substantial amount of cleanup, but there is a substantial amount to do right now as well. There's other property maintenance issues with the house, and so I would imagine it'd probably come back. I mean, if we give 30 days from right now, sitting mid-July, we'll probably come back in September.
And the how the property is a residence and is not being occupied at the moment?
Yes.
Is that correct? Okay. Any additional questions or remarks from council? Do we need to amend the agenda, Paul?
No, you don't have to do anything. We'll just bring it back to you when it's ready.
Thank you. Next item, please. Thank you, Jason.
Item number eight, ordinances and resolutions. A, consider resolution of intent to exceed revenue neutral rate.
Cool. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Enrico Viega, City Manager. So from the last time we had talked about the budget, since then, we've made additional adjustments to the proposed budget. And I'll kind of outline a few. The first one is actually a saving grace. So our medical prescription and dental projections have been reduced, and that resulted in roughly 250,000 in savings for the city. In addition to that, in working with other staff and trying to find meaningful ways to alleviate the general fund, which again is the primary fund for paying a lot of the essential services that we have in the city, we have relocated or shifted some of the levy maintenance and equipment, and then some certain some staffing positions to this to the current stormwater utility fee. And by doing that, that resulted in around 827,000. That is now alleviated from the general fund. In addition to that, this one's kind of more of a organizational cleanup. There are certain positions that, when they retire, we intend to at least promote from within. And then those positions that they were promoted out of, we would then vacate. So that would result in some salary savings for the city.
How many positions is that?
Two currently.
Okay.
And that would provide for some upward mobility, and there should not be any impacts to expected levels of service for the city. And by making those adjustments, from the last time that we had spoke, the initial proposal was a two-mill increase. But with those adjustments in mind, the new proposal would be approximately 1.7 mil. And the impact of an additional 1.7 mil on the property taxes, again, if you have a home value of around 100,000, that would result in an additional $19.55 a year. $400,000 home, $78. And then a million-dollar commercial business, $425. For comparison, this is taking our existing mil rate and then adding the 1.7. As you can see, we are still lower than our neighboring peers, and these were the same cities that were used last time. With the current outlook, in the event that we were to do nothing, we are anticipating around 873,000 in the red. These were the same figures that were shown at the last meeting. With the adjustments made, in addition to the 1.7 mil increase, that would then bump us to around a little less than 1.4 million in ending fund balance. So we went from the red to the black, and we're trending very well there. Again, same graph as last time. Some of this is just going to be an exercise in seeing it more than once. So the graph here, just for illustrative purposes, the top line is our expenditures and the bottom line is our revenue. And so as you can see, from about the, probably the end of first quarter of '23, it kind of took off. And so in this exercise, it's prudent on how do we reel this back in? And so that has really been the short-term goal with the mil levy increase, is what can we do to condense the lines together? What are some strategies that could be employed? And part of those strategies was the mil levy increase, making adjustments, and then several millions in cuts even as we were working through the proposed CIP. And so with those in mind, the dash lines represents where the original lines used to be. And so as you can see, we're tucking the lines in. So we've been able to increase our revenue and then decrease our expenditures. And so we're slowly tightening the lines. And with this in mind, the true premise of the meeting for today is to generally discuss the mil increase. But the sales tax and mil levy are practically married together. And part of that is because, in the short term, is to address this, right? The budget adjustments plus the mil levy is to address where we are in the red. The sales tax is zooming out a little and saying, how do we correct the fact that these lines just took off? And so the sales tax is kind of the longer-term outlook, while the mil levy is present-day shoring that deficit up. So again, the three proposals would be having it pay, the sales tax, the three-quarter cent sales tax, cover streets, parks, and recreation, and stormwater improvements. And with that in mind, the sales tax portion is intended to replace the current stormwater utility fee. And I want to go over some ground rules on the sales tax. So some, in a simplistic way, the steps for a sales tax election, the council would pass an ordinance calling for the election. The city would then notify the county election officer. And then the county would publish the notice of the election. And then, just for note purposes, the new sales tax rates are implemented quarterly, so January 1, April 1, July 1, and October 1. And only after the Department of Revenue has been provided 90 days notice of a successful referendum. And then I thought the last sentence there was important, that we operate on a two-month lag with the state. So some assume that whenever they make a purchase, the city receives that money right away, and we do not. And then in terms of structure, we covered this slightly at the last meeting. You can have a sales tax that's reoccurring or limited, or you can have it as a specific use or general purpose. And at the last meeting, I had shared having it being a ten-year general purpose. And part of that is to allow the city the ability to prove itself and then maybe go after something more longer term. And so that's been a strategy that many cities have employed with success. And this is just purely for example purposes. So people in the audience and anyone listening can kind of see how long that this may take. So hypothetically, if a ballot were placed on the November 4th, '25 year, the city would not collect sales tax revenue until June of '26. And then the city, at that time, would then vacate the stormwater fee after the first collection of the sales tax revenue. So in the event that, whether it was this year, next year, whatever, if the sales tax were placed on the ballot and passed, that it wouldn't be immediate that the stormwater utility fee were to fall off because then we would just harm ourselves between now and then without any revenue to help pay for projects. And so taking all of this in totality, the, kind of the short-term outlook to fix the current day's deficit, and then the long-term outlook, applying the sales tax, here's what we have since then created, where you can see now that the lines are practically one. There's a little bit of daylight between the expenditures and revenues, but essentially, we've cured the deficit. We fixed the problem. And what I really love about this proposal here, at the time, when I said that these were very precise and why I was asking for them, there's no filler, there's no fluff. Essentially, it's just exactly what the city needs to keep the lights on. And, you know, there are insert implications. There is some practical limitations with this. So say, in the instance of community members coming in saying, I want X or Y. In this event, it would be on all of us to hold the line to say that we can't afford that service, unfortunately, or we can't afford that amenity. Because in order for this proposal to work, that's just how we would have to structure it. Because this is intended to pay for the CIP as it exists today, the staffing as they exist today. And so that's where some of the limitations of this proposal can come from. So, but in any event, I am very proud that we're able to come up with something that can reasonably cure our structural issues. This is the same data from, that was presented at the last meeting as well. And it shares generally what some of our peer cities have for their sales tax rates and what their mil levies are. And I do want to share that the economic development position that's being proposed between the city and the chamber, really, it is the goal of that position to do everything they reasonably can to increase the assessed valuation for the city. Because that's one of the biggest tickets we have in order for economic prosperity and vitality. And so while, on one hand, the city can play with the mil levy rate or the sales tax rate, we really need to go all in on the assessed valuation as well. And so it's taking a multi-pronged approach towards how we can, long-term, solve some of our systemic issues that we have. And so here's kind of a scenario of an outlook on combining everything together and what our ending fund balance will look like. Just a little less than 3 million. But I think the benefit here is definitely in working with some of our bond council. As long as we have a reasonable plan in place for what we're doing, I hope that can keep our bond rating flat. And so this is something that, it's better than nothing, and it's a pretty strong plan. So, but again, it does keep us in the black, which is where we want to be. And this was kind of just more for fun and kind of exploring some what-if scenarios. And so as we know, that there are some talks generally with the county in the event that, say, they go for a half-cent sales tax. I'm not sure. But it has been talked about whether it's a half-cent or a full cent. But in this scenario, if they were to go for a half-cent, the city would theoretically collect a half of the half. So then that would push the city to one cent. Or if the city were to say, the line here is too close. You know, does that leave room for missed opportunities in the future? You know, again, that's one of the limitations of here is that because it's exactly, basically exactly what you need, it does give you the opportunity of like, well, what about all those what-ifs? And so I did provide a graph for assuming a one cent regardless of the scenario. And this isn't something necessarily being proposed because I personally, I only felt comfortable proposing for exactly what we need. But I did feel that it was important to show a what-if. And so this is what the graph would show. It's basically the inverse of the original problem, where now you have more revenue than you're spending. But that does afford the city an opportunity for, say, property tax relief or future projects down the line to where we want to say yes to those items. And so I did want to show that here, at least a snapshot in time, again, being able to zoom out. But financially, we'd still be very stable. So with that, I will turn it over to Angela for any comments, and then we can stand for questions.
Angela Richard, Director of Finance. So the matter before you tonight that we need to do is to pass the resolution of intent to exceed revenue-neutral rate. So if we intend to exceed revenue-neutral rate tonight, we must set the max amount that we would intend to levy with our mil levy. The resolution has 42.395. That's the full two-mill increase. We do not have to impose that full two-mill increase. We could do anything lower than that. But it gives us the ability to adopt up to that two-mill increase. And it sets the date of the public hearing. By statute, the date of the public hearing has to be between August 20th and September 20th. I am recommending September 2nd at 5:30. It is a meeting that falls between those dates, and it gives us some time in case something happens with the publication. We could try the next council meeting. So that would be my recommendation to pass this resolution as proposed.
Any discussion from council? So the question before council is, do we want to publish an intent to go two mils above, which would put us at 42.395?
Up to that.
Up to that, correct. Could be anywhere in between revenue-neutral or two, full two mils.
So get this straight from me, my little mind here. You said a 1.7 mil is what we're going to go after, right? But now we have, we're going to have a protection area. If we say two mil, then we're going to prove the neutral right now, or two mil. But our intent, am I right, is 1.7 mil? Am I right or wrong?
Correct. We just need to set the ceiling. So in this event, especially for anyone listening that may not know how it works, for tonight, the purpose is to set the hearing to say, we're going to exceed revenue-neutral. In this case, it's two mil. But we know it's going to be less than that. But say, in the event, while looking at the numbers and triple-checking them, it needs to be 1.8 or 1.9. And if we were to go to the county and say, you know, instead of two mil, we actually meant 1.7, now we can't go up. So this at least gives us room in the event that, while going through the numbers, it just gives us kind of a safe harbor. So that's the reasoning for saying two, when we're not actually going for two, so.
Any additional discussion from council?
So is this going to, so if we do this and say the sales tax doesn't pass, which, you know, we're looking at that, too, how is that going to affect us if the sales tax doesn't go through? Is that, should we have went, should we increase it more? I mean, I mean, should we have increased it to the two mils? Or are we going to be okay at the, like, say, the 1.7 if the sales tax does not go through?
If the sales tax doesn't go through, we'll definitely have to start having several contingency plans in place. But I am comfortable with a 1.7 for curing today's problem.
If the sales tax doesn't go through, there needs to be contingency plans in place already because the purpose of that was to kill the stormwater fee. And killing the stormwater fee is a whole different conversation. So they are, they could not be more interconnected. But because this is a one-year budget, I mean, there's always the opportunity that if this goes up, if we increase the budget 1.75, like you said, right? 1.75. And the sales tax does not pass, next year's budget could be adjusted upward to account for that, for future years, to make up for that. There's always an opportunity to go after a sales tax more than once, like we talked about. So essentially, you could put it on every election cycle until it passed, if you wanted to. Not that that would be wise, but it's an opportunity. I'm comfortable with this. I feel like the two mils gives us enough wiggle room to find some happy ground in between. I think the county is having this exact same conversation of setting their revenue-neutral rate hearing at 2.6 and falling somewhere below. So I'm comfortable with this, if council is. And I will make the motion. I move to approve a resolution of intent to exceed revenue-neutral rate.
I'll second that.
Richardson.
No, I'm not going to open this up for public comment because the purpose of this is to set a hearing.
Okay, just a second.
We have a hearing for this already.
Garza.
Yes.
Fass.
Yes.
Magers.
Yes.
Goss.
Yes.
Item number nine, new business.
What about the sales tax, putting it on November? Are we going to discuss that at a later time? And could we? I know that, I'm okay with that because it's the people that are going to decide. I just, you know, we probably should make that decision by whenever the county needs to be notified that it needs to be on the.
Yeah, so how about we, I move to amend the agenda, to add a discussion item of sales tax as item 9A. Looking for a second.
Second.
Richardson.
Yes.
Garza.
Yes.
Fass.
Yes.
Magers.
Fass.
Goss.
Sorry, yes.
Yes.
Enrico, could you come back up? I do, let's talk about the sales tax.
Presentation here.
Sure. So your slide used November 4th, 2025. Was that a placeholder? Or is that the intent to add this to the ballot in November?
No, I was just picking a date, just for illustrative purposes as to how it would work. But it could be November 26th. You know, I was just picking a date. I will say that on here, in everything that I've read statutorily, the first two steps, if we were to actually try something for this year, would need to be completed before September 2nd. So we would need to agree to pass an ordinance to call for the election and then to notify the county of our intent. And then everything after that, the county takes care of, and then it goes on the ballot. So that's best I can answer that one.
The item where a city wouldn't collect sales tax revenue until June 26th, is that including that two-month lag?
Yes.
So the actual dollars in our account would be June of 26th.
Yeah, correct. So that's factoring in that the fact that they're implementing quarterly, and then you have the 90 days baked into that, and then the two-month lag. You stretch that out, it's probably closer to like the end of June. But somewhere in the month of June is when we receive our first sales tax collection.
And I would just like it on record that this sales tax would go for streets, parks, and the removal of the stormwater utility fee.
Correct.
That seems to be, a lot of folks is, they have an issue with that. And the average homeowner pays 60-plus dollars a year for that fee on their water bill. That would be taken off. I just, and also, would there be a way to lower property taxes if we had that three-quarter percent sales tax? Or is this just still the bare minimum? Can we, I mean, I understand what's going on here. We need to be, we need to remain solvent as a city, maintain our good bond rating, and, you know, control expenses. So, I mean, I think, I think the public needs. So, I mean, I think, I think the public needs to know from us that we will, you know, try to control those things.
Correct.
If, you know, if, if there's a way, if we pass a sales tax, we can lower property taxes. I think that would be.
And that was, in, in your slide, two weeks ago, I believe you said that there would be a potential for a one-and-a-half-mill decrease eventually, after, I think it was like the six-year mark, if I recall.
The goal, I guess there's two, because there's a lot of, like, high-level things that are baked into this. One, to get, to get us to a point where we have, we're financially solvent. And so in this proposal, it's okay, what is the break-even point for us? And that's kind of demonstrated here. I will say for the city that typically what we, um, what we budget, we do underspend, not by much, but we do. And so for those savings, for what we do underspend, then for those future budget years, we can say, okay, in this case, we could probably lower our mill incrementally. And so there are other municipalities, Dodge City, I think, was a great example. I may have it in my data here. When they implemented their sales tax in twenty-two, it was for street maintenance and then property tax relief. And there was not, actually Dodge City was street maintenance utilities and property tax relief. And they were able to incrementally just take chops at their mill. And so it wouldn't be some huge drastic thing where, say, if this were passed, okay, next year, we're taking three mil off. But it would be just incrementally of, okay, maybe a half a mil or something to that effect. But over a few years, you can probably see the spread where, hey, we're able to do something meaningful on property tax relief. So, and kind of working through this and trying to, like, think through a lot of scenarios, kind of the biggest way to get that true property tax relief goal would be to do more than one cent. But for my comfortability purposes, I was just going for more of the break-even with a little bit of those incremental moves. But if we were to do a full one cent, that's where you can really move the needle.
I've, I've got my thoughts on that, too. Maybe not quite in line with that in regards to how the property tax relief works. It's, it serves the same purpose if we don't do property tax relief, and the funds go to the nuts and bolts of what we need to do. Streets, stormwater, things like that, because those are the costs we're gonna have either way. And I get a little nervous with the property tax relief to try to sell, sell a sales tax based on, even at the state-level history on property tax relief, and then not being funded anymore. But I think it's important, going back to the stormwater aspect, we, like a lot of other cities in Kansas, have years and years and years of infrastructure in our stormwater system that wasn't maintained. And then in, I think it was two thousand and sixteen, we started the stormwater fee, right? Not knowing, realizing now that a lot of the work that's done to the stormwater system involves other work that we can't apply those funds for. So it erodes away at our other funding mechanisms we weren't budgeting for, is that correct?
Yep.
So by putting it on a sales tax as more of an open fund to work on stormwater and other aspects that are secondary to stormwater, work like the streets, and we tear it up for stormwater, we can't use stormwater funds now for that.
Correct.
Which is hurting us, even if we have a healthy stormwater fund, if we do or don't. But let's say we do, we have a bunch of stormwater work to do. We have all these ancillary jobs we have to do, we can't use those funds for. And by doing this, it opens that up to a broader piggy bank to do what we need to do to fix the stormwater system.
Yeah, absolutely.
I think that's a, that's a bigger message to talk about.
It is.
And, and that's kind of the idea behind, like, the general-purpose use of it. And then kind of a minor note, I will say, going down the path of having the general-purpose tax, it's a best practice, not a requirement, but to, for the city to pass an ordinance, at least detailing kind of how those funds would be used, just as a, a show of being a good steward of the tax dollar. So in this case, it would be, you know, the city would use it for streets, parks, stormwater, et cetera. And then if we wanted to attribute percentages to those, or whatever the case may be. But typically, it's at least best practice, so people know what the expectations are for that sales tax.
It would also be important to note, in regards to the sales tax aspect, what are we doing to try to drive sales tax revenues for people who don't live here? Because any effort we make on that is going to relieve the cost burden to the people that live here if it's being supported by people visiting Hutchinson. So anything we can do to grow that sales tax, which is a big part of other things we're doing, but that's part of the story as well, not just, here's what we're doing, here's a tax. It's who's paying it, how's it being paid? And we need to keep our mind on that when we're talking about sales tax.
Right, and our own sales tax versus a county's sales tax, that, like I said at the last meeting, a county's sales tax essentially is earned on the back of Hutchinson residents and Hutchinson tourism, and then dispersed throughout the rest of the county. And I personally want our money to stay in Hutch. However, the county can put out whatever they want for a vote. That's, that's their decision. I think that, knowing that the two conversations are being had at the same time, but the county has its own extra, like, they have to get state approval, right? Which is that legislative approval or administration approval?
Legislative, I believe.
Okay, so there's no way possible that they get legislative approval until February?
Yeah, certainly not this year.
So I think that this is a conversation for us to have. Not shooting for a November fourth election, obviously. Just trying to see, I had what date advanced ballots are made up, mailed out, and I have a feeling the county office is probably sitting there thinking, by God, don't go for November, because they've probably already set their ballot. But what would the other options be? So if not November, special election in the spring or summer? Or it would be November of twenty-twenty-six, is that correct?
Correct. And I, I would say, too, that it, in, in, regardless of the scenario here, if we were to, say, if the county were pursuing the one-cent sales tax, and the city, and say that were to pass, a county-wide one, and the city were to collect a forty-eight or forty-nine percent of that, it's a little less than half, but close, it's, would not be enough revenue to get rid of the stormwater utility fee, and there would still be some structural issues we would have to look at in terms of our budget in the out-years. So I just want to make that clear.
Well, and just looking at, hold on, I have the wrong window up. So Census data says that the median value of owner-occupied housing units in two thousand and nineteen to twenty-twenty-three is a hundred and twenty-two, six-hundred thousand dollars. So, or a hundred and twenty-two, six-hundred. So that calculated, what, like, nineteen fifty-five per year, plus a bit? But then killing the stormwater fee would save sixty dollars a year. So not calculating in, I can't remember what you said, potentially a regular person would spend on a one-percent sales tax per year. But it's kind of getting into the gray area of, it's kind of a wash of this versus that.
So my thought, can, can it be obtained to get it on this election, November? Because the, I, I sit there and I'm looking at it like, going, we're talking about saving money here and there, and we're gonna spend forty, sixty thousand dollars for a special election. I, I feel like we should almost be saving that money instead of spending it on a special election, if we could do it in November.
It, we could, I would just, I would need your direction to proceed with that. The, really, just the kickers are those first two steps. But we could theoretically pass the ordinance next council meeting if that was our desire. And then at that point, as long as we notify the county before, because there's a holiday, I think, on the first, so it would bump us to the second of September. So as long as we notify them by September second. But it'd be safer to at least do it before that. So however quickly we want to move would be preferred. But that's totally up to your discretion on when you'd want the sales tax.
Because I, I kind of look at it from the standpoint of going, you know, we're trying to obtain all these things, I don't want to raise taxes. But if, you know, we could raise taxes, eliminate the stormwater fee, and get that done, you know, take it to the voters in November and see if they're okay with that. And then we could actually get this thing moving a little bit faster than waiting for possibly another year for this to happen. Because, I mean, costs continue to go up, so if we could actually, you know, and there's a lot of things coming, that if we could get that sales tax in place before, we could reap the benefit of that. Just a, just a thought.
I would agree with your earlier statement about why spend twenty to forty thousand dollars on a special election when we could do it with the general election? That's, those are my thoughts.
It, it's going to, not just pointing out, it will put some pressure on making sure good information gets out there, so people can, how are they voting on this? And they know good information, so they say yes or no, based on not false information or assumptions. That gives us basically three or four months to do that. And as long as we recognize that, I don't see an issue with that.
It gives you, like, a hundred days to do this. And you're, that's starting from scratch.
And I, I mean, I'd be willing to give it a shot, because I just think if we can save that money, instead of spending it, then we can spend it on something else. You need to publicly tell us if we're being stupid thinking about this.
I think this is stupid.
I, because we, I, we don't know staff time, all, all the, the back ends of what it takes to do this. We need to have some, we need to have good information, too, on what we're asking for.
I mean, it seems simple to me, but I understand the stormwater utility fee. I, I never used to look at my water bill, but I do now for that fee, and I have properties that don't have water, that I'm paying that fee, writing a check for specifically that fee. I think that's pretty clear. You tell people that you don't pay the stormwater utility fee again. What it's going for, I mean, what messaging? I guess the messaging of, of the mill levy and how that affects, and, and the, the path to insolvency, you know, I guess those are the messages.
Do you think those are easy conversations to have?
No, no, I don't.
That people are just gonna catch on to?
But I don't know how, how many times you have to say it, or repeat it, or say it differently. I don't know if waiting a year, if that's gonna, people are gonna say, oh, yeah, I get it now. But I, I live this, so I get it.
You know, the thing is, you look at the stormwater fee, and you go, we're sitting here saying it's almost useless. I mean, we use it for stormwater, but that's it. So maybe that transparency of going, if we have the sales tax, stormwater goes away, which then we can use the sales tax to actually do what we need to do. Infrastructure will help our city in the future more than the stormwater fee.
But that's not gonna be your ballot question. Your ballot question is going to be, do you want a one-percent sales tax or not?
To be used this way.
Yes, but at no point, no, it's not. It is, it, you will, it will not say in place of, because that ballot question is not going to kill the sales tax. I guarantee that the lawyer over there would tell you, your ballot question is going to read, one-percent sales tax going to X, Y, and Z, yes, no. It is not going to say a word about this stormwater fee.
It's gonna be a yes.
That is killed via a ordinance that repeals the stormwater fee that was enacted in fifteen. That is the only way that we kill the stormwater fee. You will have to have.
And so no matter what, the public has to trust us.
We are a hundred days out from the election. I guarantee that is not enough time for city staff or for a committee to start a campaign from scratch.
I think it's a pretty cheap expense to give it a shot.
That's the, I mean, that, twenty thousand dollars to, to do a special election, if you wanted to?
It's still twenty grand.
That's the cost of doing business.
Yeah, but it could save us twenty grand if we do it in November. If we can do it, if it's attain, if it's attainable, I mean, I don't want to have an unrealistic expectation. We, we've got the special election cost, and we have the November cost.
There is no November cost.
Or the versus, the costs versus. What is the benefit in regard, if it's voted and approved in November versus when we have a special election? How soon, the way I say it to customers, how soon is the cash register started? Because that's a cost, too. In regard to, because then you're gonna go into budget season next year, knowing if you've had this much sales tax generated versus waiting on it longer.
Yeah, the cost is more than, more than twenty thousand dollars.
Next year on budget.
Yeah. I, I would, if we look at pros and cons, I mean, a pro would be that we, we start collecting revenue in twenty-six, and we know that it passes, so then we can start implementing what I had just proposed, and kind of tightening everything up, going from there. So there is value to that. I mean, a, a con would be if we kind of take the, the bigger picture of how many items would be on the ballot. In my, in all my years of doing this, I usually see, well, then it, it could become an either-or, depending on what's on the ballot, or, I, I don't know, I just, I don't know if that would hurt us, like, if it were to be on this November or not. So, but I certainly understand the financial side of wanting to have it in November. But, yeah, it's just, it's such like a hard question to answer honestly.
Let's, how about this? We have until September. We could, we have two meetings in August. I think we need to do a little cost-benefit analysis, both on the time, because we don't know what it's gonna take logistically, time, costs, for staff to prepare this, and what that extent would be, as well as marketing, what it is, getting information out there. Let's, let's gather a little bit more information before the August second meeting. It's August second? Can we have, like, a presentation on what that would be? I mean, we can make the decision August fifteenth.
The fifth is the meeting.
The fifth.
You mean the cost-benefit of delaying it? Like, the dollars we would lose delaying it?
I'm saying, we would have to make a vote in August, the five of us.
Yes.
We want it to be on the November ballot.
Okay.
Doesn't have to be done tonight. And I don't think we have enough information between the five of us to know, to do a good cost-benefit analysis for us, time and money, and opportunity costs, if it's gonna be November versus a special election later on, to make that decision tonight. We need more information to deliberate this properly.
I don't. I've been running campaigns for sixteen years, and I will tell you that we do not have enough time to do this.
I need more information.
But I agree.
But.
Um, I, I'm trying to find a.
Maybe you should run this campaign.
I'm not ready to make a yes-no decision.
I'm not either.
I'm not either. We don't have.
But I think we could shoot for that, and I think that, you know, if you could talk to staff about messaging and what that might look like.
If I wasn't with you, I wouldn't, if I was a guy, I'd say something. I agree, I don't think we have enough time. Question?
Yes.
If we put it on this coming November and we lost, can we, we can do it again, right, in twenty-six?
Yeah, I mean, we could always run it back. But, so if we, okay, so just thinking out loud here. So August fifth, we have more discussion around this. Give pros and cons, or what the cost would be and other things. If the intent would be to have it in November, we would have to have an ordinance before you all, August nineteenth, if that's the direction we're gonna go. So that way, we can have plenty of time for the county.
And we're looking to you on educating us. Here's what you guys don't realize what happens for staff and to get this thing going.
Yeah, I mean, there's certainly risks on our end, and just, again, on the education piece. You know, I just read something that said we were raising the mill three-point-eight and change. It's not how it works. We didn't raise the mill, three-point-eight mil. And so those are things that we probably do run the risk of just kind of lack of knowledge getting in the way. So I'd probably, truthfully, I would want to look at, like, Derby and Dodge City to kind of see what they did, because I really don't want this to flop. There's a lot of stake on this, especially for future, for future years, because I don't always want it to be a dogfight.
I don't, I'm just saying right now, I don't think there's enough time. So October fifteenth is the first day of advanced voting. That's the day that advanced ballots are mailed out. That means that they've already been set and approved and printed and marked for postage. I feel like this, that's, that's all I'll say. I don't think there's enough time to.
I just want to explore it, just to see. I mean, because I, again, I don't have enough information to know that. I just want to explore it, just to make sure that we make the best decision for the taxpayers.
Yeah, and, and, you know, to be fair, I don't want to. Yeah, and, and, you know, to be fair, I don't want to rush to save twenty thousand dollars and then have it, like you said, maybe not. But there's still, I, I wish people would listen and understand. I still get people asking me, what's going on with Woody Seat Freeway? What are they doing to the bridge? And so I feel like people that may vote yes or no on that are gonna be involved, hopefully.
Shoot, I was at a business, they just told the charge of nine point one percent sales tax the other day. And that was from what, four or five years ago?
Yes. Um, yeah, it's amazing.
So August fifth, bring forward information for you all to digest.
And maybe it doesn't work. I mean, but at least like to have that knowledge.
We're not the only community having mill, mill levy, sales tax talks. All you gotta do is watch the news. There's a bunch of other communities around doing the same thing.
Yeah. Alright.
Thank you. There's no action required on this item. Next item, please.
Item number nine B now. Update on twenty one hundred South Bone Break commercial structure.
Good evening again, council. Jason Lady, building official. This is an update on twenty one hundred South Bone Break, the commercial structure. So on April first, two thousand twenty five, you and the city council passed a resolution twenty five hour oh four to condemn and declare the commercial structure at twenty one hundred South Bone Break unsafe and dangerous. And the resolution provided the owner either ninety day period to bring the structure into compliance or remove the structure. The follow-up date during that hearing was set for today, July fifteenth, two thousand twenty five. So today's update is the, I've had multiple conversations with Mr. Friar throughout the course of this, throughout the course of this ninety days. Our last conversation, he stated to me that they've removed about five hundred cubic yards of material from the property. They have removed some interior drop ceiling and drywall to kind of complete the evaluation of the structure. An architect and engineer have been involved. However, they have not been on site until the materials from the inside could be removed to evaluate the structure properly. And then some tarps were purchased for the, to tarp the roof.
Jason, I, I have a question.
Yep.
Who's Mr. Friar and what's the relation to the property owner?
So Mr. Friar is with R and D Construction.
Okay.
And he's been working on behalf of Ms. Gress.
Is he the general contractor then?
Yes, he's contractor. Thank you. July fifteenth, two thousand twenty five, or, I mean, continued update, sorry. July tenth, two thousand twenty five, did speak with Ms. Gress. We did confirm that no bonding has been secured to date. She is actively, she has been actively pursuing other future, further grants, funding sources. None have been awarded or received to date. We did speak about tarping the roof and I told her at that point we would schedule a staff visit for Monday, July fourteenth. So we did go back out there on Monday. Ms. Gress and I had a good conversation for, for a little while out there. And, and I walked the property and took some further photos that I just wanted to bring here tonight, just to give you an update on the status of the property. So we're just gonna click through these. There's the front of the property, just so, show the condition of the front and the roof. There's a little bit more of the front on the roof and you can see some deterioration on the front of the building there. Here's a view of the front of the building, but on the, on a side view of it. This is the other side of the building and we'll get to some more deterioration that's happened over here in these further pictures. You can see some separation up top up there, some deterioration of the, of the siding or the facade. This is the back of the building and they have removed a lot of materials. I know it looks like there's a lot of materials there on the site, but they have removed a lot of materials from this site. But you can see the deterioration of the roof still up here on this, I guess what we would call more ballroom area. You see the deterioration across the top of the roof. Again, just some up close shots of the deterioration on the roof. This is the tarping on the roof as it stands out there today. There may have been a little bit more tarping. We did talk about some more tarping, but I did not go back there, out there today to update any pictures. So like I said, on July fourteenth, I made a site visit out there. I did have a lengthy discussion with Ms. Gress on the condition of the building and the procedures moving forward. We did discuss the procedures for the Landmark Commission, city council, kind of how we would proceed as staff here tonight. And had a real good and open discussion about that. And we talked about the procedures for any condemnation for the, or demolition actions either taken by the city or by her as the owner. Then late afternoon, Mr. Friar of R and D contacted our department and requested to pull a demolition permit to proceed with the demolition of the commercial structure, twenty one hundred South Bone Break. So he called me yesterday afternoon, discussed potential for pulling a demolition permit. So he submitted the demolition permit. I can't issue the demolition permit because what has to happen at this point is that demolition permit would have to go in front of the Landmarks Commission. So they would have to, that, that would have to go through the process and we're gonna talk about that process here in just a second. So we did not issue a permit, just in case you have that question. But a permit has been applied forward to demo the building. Some next steps. So condemnation has been previously approved on April twenty, or April first, two thousand twenty five. The structure was ordered to be repaired or removed. The contractor, like I said, has applied for a permit for demolition. The permit is active for sixty days. So council can't allow that time for the contractor to remove the structure within the timeframe of the issued permit or due to the lack of progress or the repair of the demolition by the state to date, July fifteenth. Council can direct staff to proceed with the demolition procedures that will be undertaken by the city. The building's inclusion on both the state and national historic register means that the demolition is subject to the city's historic preservation regulations and applicable state statutes. We're gonna get into a little bit of that here, here in just a second. But during this process, if, if we did move forward, well, either process, during the process, staff would subsequently issue a request for bids for the building demolition with the goal of having the bid ready for council at the time demolition is authorized. So steps for demolition, and this is kind of twofold here, so hopefully I don't miss any moving parts and we do have Matt Williams here, so if there is, because he is way more familiar with the Landmark Commission than I am. But this would be a review by the Landmark Commission. Either way we go here tonight, whether we allow time for the demolition or for R and D to demo the building themselves or whether we go to say no and have the city stay the course and, and demo the building ourselves, it still has to be reviewed by the Landmark Commission. So that doesn't change anything on what has to happen. It has to be reviewed by the Landmark Commission. So Landmark's decision, and, and you see the one and two there. And so we review it either based on a request by the owner to demolish or we review it on a substantial hardship to the owner. And that establishes a four, forty-five day period for the director of community and development to seek alternative methods to preserve the building. Now, a lot of those alternative methods we've already pursued, it doesn't mean we have to go the forty-five days in that instance. It could go two, three, it could go whatever. It just has to be up to a point of forty-five days. So we would have to, and, and I say we, but Matt Williams, director of community development, he would, he would then look at any alternative methods to try to preserve the building, which we've looked at. We know the city can't provide any funding to this building. We've already exhausted a lot of things that we've talked with Ms. Gress about, about going out and getting grants, about getting funding. We've exhausted a lot of those already. So it'd be just a matter of looking at, is there any further things out there that we could possibly reach out to and get any further funding? Sitting down and kind of brainstorming on this a little bit, we can't think of any off of our, top of our heads, but that doesn't mean there's not something out there. And then you see A below that. So based on owner request, staff can schedule these meetings sooner. Based on the substantial hardship, there will be a little bit of a waiting period. Don't know how long that waiting period would be, but it has to be up, it can be up to forty-five days. It can be shorter though, but there would be at least a little bit of a waiting period. So we can schedule a lot of the meetings quicker, probably moving forward with the demo permit as opposed to the substantial hardship. Number three, the landmark decision would be based on state statute in light of the Secretary of Intended Standards for Rehabilitation. So the commission is expected to find that demolition would destroy a historic property. So in light of that, and accordingly, they would probably be doing their due diligence to say, no, we don't want to destroy a historic property. I mean, that's kind of the Landmarks Commission's job is to keep these historic properties intact and viable. So they would probably deny the certificate appropriate, appropriateness. Not saying that they would. They could vote yes, but most likely that's, that's a no. And then if denied by the Landmark Commission, the owner or the building official, depending on which way we go here, if we allow for the demo permit for the contractor to move forward with it, then the owner would have to request that it move to city council. If we go the other route of the city moving forward, then I, as a building official, would request that it move to city council from there after the Landmark Commission denies it. So the city council may authorize demolition of approval if no prudent alternative exists. So if we determine that there's no prudent alternatives out there to successfully rehabilitate this building, then you as the city council, after the Landmark Commission's denial, would bring it to you and you would be able to override the landmark decision. Rent notice must be sent to the state historic preservation office as well. This has to happen five days when we come back to the city council for this. This happens, has to happen five days before that meeting. That's just a staff thing, but I did want to let you know that that's something that just has to happen. So we're just fully aware and educated on the process. And then last but not least, again, during this process, staff would subsequently put a bid out there for demolition. And really the reason for that is just because if we go through this process and we decide that we're gonna demo the building, if the contractor either fails to or, or can't do it for some reason, or something happens along those lines, then the city has already got the bids out there and we could step in at the end and still move forward with the demolition. So both these processes, processes could happen together at the same time. It's really just which one do we want to move forward with and allow? And I'll stand for questions if you have any.
So it's all, what I hear, and it's all on the landmark system right now, because they're requesting a demolition. Am I right? Very.
They are, they are.
Requesting demolition.
Yes.
For her contractor to do it, correct?
Yes, sir.
So it all sits on the Landmarks decision. And like you said, it's already gone through the state saying that it's a historic society, said. And just, you're thinking, just because they're a historic landmark, follow historic procedures, they'll probably say, no, you can't destroy it. And at that time, it comes back to us.
Yes.
And we make a decision to go ahead and demolish regard what the landmark said, right?
Regardless, yes. Yes. You, you as the city council have the authority to override it and that's based on the way that our local ordinance is written for the historic preservation.
And at this time, when does the, while we're going through all this, is the forty-five days getting laid up at that time? Or doesn't, when does the forty-five days start?
Yeah, so all this could be just together in one. We could go through this together as one process. The forty-five days really would start after the Landmark Commission. And, and it's not really forty-five days. I mean, it's, it's a maximum of forty-five days. So it could be, if we determine in two days that, that there's no other viable funding out there for this building, then, I mean, we could stop and say, no, there's nothing. We've already exhausted everything. And we've exhausted a lot of it already, I mean, truthfully. So it's just a matter now of seeing if there's anything else out there that we just are not familiar with or that we just haven't seen. But I think Matt Williams has done a terrific job of, of trying to exhaust all those alternatives out there.
They took my cheat shit off the area.
Do you need that backup?
No, I got it.
Okay.
Well? Anybody else got anything to say?
I have a question for Mrs. Gress. If she'd be able to come up to the podium, please.
Yes, ma'am.
I just wanted to touch base with you because it seemed like before your commitment was to renovate the property and to restore the property. Can you talk us through how you arrived at the decision to demolish the property? And I know it was probably not an easy decision by any means.
Because it's history for our family as well as for the community. And over the years, we've generated jobs and as well as being at the Kansas State Fairgrounds. So I need my kitchen to cook. And it is heartbreaking, but Rick from, Mr. Friar's from the, being as a contractor, we had to go back and reevaluate and look at the fundings, the, the changes that are being made in Washington DC now. All the cutbacks, a lot of programs were not available to qualify for, or they've been done away with. And after COVID, I applied for the restaurant evaluation, revitalization program that would help restaurants through and after COVID. I was one of the two thousand applicants that was supposed to come first. But due to politics, they came in and sued different states and the judges sided with that. So when I called the SBA, they said, your money, twenty-nine thousand dollars to start with and twenty-three would start my project. On the seventh day, they said, oh, you're not the only one. There's other people that are in line. And then they, I called back and they said, we don't have any money. It's gone. But did people in Reno County and Hutchinson? But did people in Reno County and Hutchison get the money? Absolutely. There's a list that shows who got money in Reno County. Now, it is not up to the government to take care of me. We've worked all our lives. So my hands are kind of tied if I don't have the money, unfortunately. Yes, it is heartbreaking, but we have a good contractor. He issued the demo permit. My husband, who's deceased, would be very unhappy, but sometimes there's just some things we have to move on and do. But between now and the review, if some money falls out of the sky, I won't tear it down because this is not what we want. But we've cleaned up the property, we're still cleaning it up, and, and good faith and good conscience, that's the best I can do. Does that answer what you'd like to know?
Yes, thank you.
Yeah. You're welcome.
I don't know that I support the city pursuing the demolition and the bids alongside allowing Mrs. Gress's petition to the landmark at the same time. That just seems almost like busy work. Do you feel strongly that we should pursue the bids at the same time?
I don't really doubt Mr. Friar's intentions to remove the property, you know, applying for a demo permit, but I think it just provides a safety net for all of us of a process that we've been going through for some time. So I think it probably is prudent that we do pursue the bids at the same time, just to...
I don't know. I think Mrs. Goss has spent a lot of money on it. I pursue this, that she, we go ahead and let her contractor, because it's all about money. She's already spent a lot of money. It's going to get done. So I would like to see her pursue her own contractor. She's already got a contractor who's probably going to work with her on knocking it down. The bottom line is, as long as it gets knocked down, that's all we're after, we're after demolish it.
I agree. I feel like pursuing bids, you probably have other things to work on. I know you're pretty busy. It seems like a waste of time and funds.
I, I feel like we, we should move forward with the city pursuing demolition because of what we voted on at the last meeting, and that was a ninety-day period contingent upon the posting of a cash bond. That didn't happen. Procedurally, I think we should move forward because otherwise, moving forward into other situations in the future, this could be used as an example. Well, you didn't force a cash bond on that job, even though you were supposed to, and that's what you voted on.
So I think that this property has the extra layer of the landmark commission's involvement. And Mr. Williams, maybe you could come and speak to the amount of meetings that the landmark commission has held in the past ninety days, because I think they've only met once.
Yeah, good evening, mayor and council. Landmarks Commission met one time, probably in the last few months, and we did discuss this case. We were talking about kind of the process for the property owner and potentials of repairing the roof and what that may look like, but...
What was the date of that meeting?
That would have been probably mid-June.
June 12.
Thank you. Even looking at the ten properties that we have on the agenda for hearings on the fifth, none of those are landmark properties, so I don't believe that this is going to be used against us, so to speak, in, in those hearings, perhaps in the more distant, distant future it could be, but it feels like the prudent thing to do.
I get it. I don't want to, I don't want to spend city money either. I just think it would be, I don't know if it's saying, setting a precedent, but if in the future we give someone ninety days and we give them contingent upon a cash bond, and they don't provide the cash bond, and it's gone past the ninety days, and they're able to pull permits to do, even if it's demo, or now they're going to work on it, we're going to have to remember this one because it could be put back on us.
They've already filed for a demo, though.
After the ninety days.
And the precedent has already been set. This first, the first hearing on this was six years ago.
I get that.
The precedent is already there.
So it should have been torn down two, three years ago? It's, it's been six years of contingent upon, and then an action happens or not happens, and then a contingent upon an action happening, and then it doesn't happen. And that's where my frustration is.
I get that. Has a demo permit ever been filed on this property?
Now we're past the ninety days, and we're saying, pull a permit, give us another sixty days.
A demo permit ever been filed? Not to my knowledge.
On this property?
No. We've had a couple, a few permits in the last few years. We're talking about shoring up and, and things like that, but not a demo permit, no.
And those permits expired?
Yes.
And this one has been filed but can't be approved until it goes to landmarks commission.
Can't be approved because it's got to go through the process.
The next landmarks commission is going to be in August.
We can actually call a special meeting for any of those, so we can move those, we can move that date up as far as going through the landmark commission, so it doesn't, we could speed up the process.
I won't play devil's advocate here, and he's got a good point, but we just did that on the man. We're just doing something different, depending on what we hear. We just did that on a two-day permit, so it's done all the time. And at the time, if somebody comes out and say, you did this, did that, we deal with it then. But I'd like to see, she's, we're getting what we want, it's getting demolished, it's getting done. I must say, not probably, but it's really, just can't have the money to do it as a contract, we put bids out for it. This way, she'll have her own contract, she has to get it done in forty-five days, is that what I see?
The permit would be good for sixty from the time that it's issued.
We have a deadline, it has to be done in sixty, correct?
Yes.
No, demo permits can be extended.
Yeah, okay, but that's just part of the procedure we go through all the time.
It can't be with proper justification, yes. That's my discretion, yeah.
It's got to go through landmarks commission, and then back to city council, and if and then, or the landmarks commission first, then it can be issued on the demo permit.
No, it's got to go through, well, it depends on the process, so yes and no, because if it goes through the landmark commission and it's denied, then, and say, no, you need to try to preserve, do everything you can, try to preserve this building, then we got to set it on the city council to come back here to the city council and have the city council make the decision whether to move forward with the demolition or not.
Playing hypothetical, it goes to landmark commission in a month, forty-five days typically. We still have the state to...
Well, we can, we can, we can move up the landmark commission. That's, you know, that's...
Wait, they can call a special meeting?
We can call a special meeting for the landmark commission.
Does that require publication in the newspaper for, because it's a hearing for that one? Okay.
It goes to landmark commission. Landmark commission says, let's say they say no. And then they can petition to take it to city council.
Yes.
Then it comes to us again. Then we can approve to move forward with the demo permit. Then it has sixty days on the demo permit from that point.
Yes.
It's just my point, it's a process. But the, the bottom line, she says she's going to demo it. That's what we wanted. So that's what we wanted. So if it takes another sixty days, so what? We do it all the time. People come here and they say, I'm sorry, I don't have, supposed to have this sixty days ago to have my permit in the, in the dance, whatever they're going to have. I want to know if we can get by with two days. We do that stuff all the time. It's a discussion that we have. The bottom line is, what we wanted was to demo the thing. And the reason I'm there, I've been involved in this since I've been here, nineteen, when I first became a council. This building was my baby, and I wanted her to get through, and I pushed her and pushed her. I met her every week, we talked. It just came down to money. Didn't have the money to do it. So my point of view, it's getting done. If it takes sixty days, another, it's going to get done. We see the light at the end of the tunnel, it's going to come down.
Let me ask this. If it goes to, if, if she moves forward and we say, okay, let her do it, it goes to landmark commission, landmark commission says no.
Yes.
It's on her to take it to city council to appeal that.
It is.
She decides not to appeal it, then, then there's no demo permit.
Yes.
Then we're back where we are right now.
Then...
And that's, that's why staff's recommendation, regardless of any of the process, is to move forward with the bid process to ensure that we have, that we're going through this process together. That way, we just provide a backstop at the end of the day to...
Do we have to get the bids before we go to landmark commission?
No.
So we wouldn't have that cost.
And if, if I may, council, I would say that more than likely, we would exhaust more staff time if we did not do the things in parallel, because we're still going to be tracking, following along with the process of it going to the landmark, say if it was the owner that initiated that permit, and say they end up not demoing the building for whatever reason. And then we then as staff have to start our own clock and kind of go through this route again. Now we're spending more time on it. So I think in this route, while we're already working with them, you have those in concert. I mean, I, I think less staff time would be exhausted on option A.
I think I would like to pursue the option A, so at least there's a safety net. If it doesn't happen, then at least we have something to fall back on.
I don't like that for one reason, which is if you're, so putting together a bid as a construction demolition company takes time, which is a sunk cost if you don't win the bid. And if the crews who do this type of demolition work know that she already has a guy to do the job, and that's the default, I don't think we're going to get good bids. And then we're going to get screwed because we have to pay the lowest of the highest bids, and then that could come in a lot higher. Or we could put it out for rebid once we know for sure that, that, that we're doing the work, in which case we just wasted a whole bunch of time and taxpayer money because your salary is taxpayer money. And if that's what we're trying to save here, then it just seems like it's...
If, if we pursue it in coordination with, and let's say the landmarks commission says, yes, we'll allow you to demo it, then the city doesn't have to put any time, put anything out for bid, because she has permission and could have the permit moving forward to demo the building. She doesn't have to come back for city council for the mission, or she doesn't have to decide to appeal to city council.
Right.
You know, as a contractor, when you're bidding things, that's part of the game. If you're going to bid the projects, you're going to win some, you're going to lose some. I mean...
I'm saying they're not going to bid them in the first place.
That would not stop her from bidding a project like this. I mean, because there's always the possibility that it's going to, is going to come through. I don't know.
I was just going to say that when we went through the demolition of the atrium, we went through the same process. We requested bids before the update came back to council, so that council, assuming they went through with demolition, the bids were ready to vote on approval of those. And we had a great response on that. Obviously, a lot bigger project.
I get what you're saying, because I'm a big advocate of being smart on how we bid things too, and I understand. I think there's a way to, to pursue this without going through the effort, putting out for bid until we see what the landmarks commission comes back with.
Could you speak up so we can hear you?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I have a habit of leaning back. I've been told I need to lean into the microphone, I'm sorry. Yeah, I said that we, there's, as far as the city goes, the city and Ms. Gress can both pursue the demo with the landmark commission at the same time, and pending on what the landmark commission says on whether you move forward with demo and you're allowed to, or if the city is allowed to.
Do we have first right of review, meaning that assuming that the landmark commission says it's okay to demo, we get the opportunity to demo before you guys do?
I would think that's where, that's where our crux is right now, yeah. Yeah, and that would be, if, I think that's where our decision is, is landmark commission says, yes, you can demo, then there's really no point on us moving forward with anything at that point. Because then your demo permit is, is good to go, you got sixty days.
Right.
With possible extensions.
And we have a contractor to do that.
I'd, I'd say at least we'd be ready, and if, you know, if we have to get bids together after it goes to landmark, then that's what we have to do. But at least we're right there.
Yeah, we don't have to go out and get bids right now. I mean, we can wait and part of the process and still start the bid process at a later date, you know?
So the bottom line is, is the permit, ain't that right, mister, lady, is the permit? Once she gets the permit, then she can start, right?
Yes, but it's got to go through that process to get, to get the permit.
It has to go through the process with this landmark commission, right?
Yes, it has been applied for, we just have to wait for the process.
Okay.
Yeah.
Can I just say that landmarks is not going to approve the demolition? Landmarks will deny it, and it will come back to council to either allow Mrs. Gress to demolish it or allow the city to demolish it.
It's not guaranteed to come back to council unless the city pursues it.
Right, right. The, the only way it can be demolished is if the city council approves it to be demolished. Landmarks will not approve it.
Is that, could, can we advise you to call a special meeting for landmarks so that this would, so that we have a decision by the fifth, and then we could essentially put this on the agenda on the fifth?
Yeah, I think that based on past, you know, impromptu meetings, we could have one scheduled prior to the agenda for this next city council meeting, so we could have an update.
That's a good idea, Stacy.
So theoretically, at the next meeting, you could hear the appeal.
And who helps her prepare the appeal? Is it between her and the contractor, or does staff assist with her appeal?
I would think it would be a pretty simple form we just need her signature on.
Do we have a form that we can give to them tonight to fast track?
Definitely, we could have it at landmarks meeting.
Okay.
So I would get the form before the landmark commission?
We'd provide you that form at the landmarks commission.
Mrs. Gress, do you want to come back up here so we can kind of recap everything? And Mr. Friar, if you could?
And just to clarify, for other questions in the room, this would not need to go to the state for any approval.
It does not need to go to the state?
No.
So the, so just to, and the question back here from Mr. Friar was, what about the state? And so the state provides the authority to us. So the only notification we have to make back to the state is the five days before the city council meeting. So when the landmark commission rejects it, we can make notification to the state right then and there to go ahead and proceed and notify them that we're putting it on the agenda for the city commission. They just need that notification. They don't need, they don't have any objection process or waiting period for any of that. We just make notification that we are moving forward with the demolition.
Okay, Ms. Gress, can you come?
Whether it's Ms. Gress as the owner or city.
Okay. So, and Matt, I'm looking at the landmarks' regular meetings, and it looks like they meet, also meet on the fourth Thursday of the month as needed. Is that correct? So that would be the 24th.
We could set a meeting then, or what I would probably prefer to do is just reach out to them and see if there's a date between now and then that would work for them.
Okay. Okay, so, Mrs. Gress, what's going to happen is sometime in the next two weeks, there will be a special meeting of the landmarks commission. I would encourage Matt to reach out to you also to make sure that it works, because obviously you have to be there. And at that meeting, you'll request to demo, for, you'll put in your demolition request, essentially. So Mr. Friar would probably want to attend with you to talk through all of that. The assumption is that they're going to deny it on the spot because demolition does not fit with historical preservation. That's essentially what we all assume will happen. After that, Mr. Williams will provide you either at that meeting or before, a petition to bring it to city council. to bring it to City Council to override their decision. And so that decision, if we override it, because they said you can't, you can't demolish the building, so you're asking us to say, yes, you can. And yes, you can by using Mr. Friar as your general contractor.
Absolutely.
Okay. So what that does is, after that, Mr. Lady, if you could, would you, would you pursue bids for city demolition prior to, within the next two weeks? Or would you be waiting until the Landmarks Commission and that August 5th mark?
A question.
Yeah, go ahead.
Why are we pursuing bids to make the city pay? I'm not out to make taxpayers pay for anything. I've never asked the city for anything but time. So since Mr. Friar's has done well with our project and property, I feel safe in conduct, you know, with him, demo it. He keeps his word. He's worked a lot with Jason. Jason can validate him. He's got a lot of projects going on in the city. Therefore, it would be better for Bernard's if Mr. Friar's did it.
I agree. I completely agree with you. I think that the goal is, and in all of these conversations, the goal always has been for either owner demolition or owner rehabilitation. And when the rehabilitation is not happening, and you've made that decision on your own, the goal is owner demolition. I agree with you. I don't think that we should be pursuing bids at the same time. This two-week period of waiting, I don't think does any harm. Because in, within two to three weeks, we'll know the Landmarks' decision, we'll know your intent to appeal their decision, and we can put you on the agenda for the next City Council meeting, which would be August 5th. So I don't agree that we need to be pursuing bids in the next three weeks if we're holding a, if we're asking Landmarks to hold a special meeting.
I don't think we need to put it out for bid unless we don't have the paperwork for the appeal in hand by the city, next City Council meeting. Because then, if we don't have the appeal, then it is on the city...
Right.
...to move forward. Yeah.
So after, after August 5th, we would put it out for bid?
Correct. If we went simultaneously, we don't actually have to go through the work of putting out for bid, but we can have the, the city can go through the same process at the same time with the Landmarks Commission and be told no as well. Then the city can then pursue it.
What?
What? I'm not understanding this.
He didn't say anything that I didn't already say.
Okay. So it wouldn't go for other bids or anything? Okay.
As long as you go to the Landmarks Commission meeting, you request the demo, the assumption is they'll say no, and then you immediately file a petition to overturn their decision, which brings it back to us.
Okay.
I want to give you the demo permit. I don't want it to go out to bid. I don't want this to go on the tax rolls. I don't want this to go to the sheriff's sale. All of that drags it all out.
I don't want to burden anybody in Hutchinson. I appreciate everybody that's worked hard to help us on this project, and we're going to move forward, being positive, right?
I promise you, Mr. Garza will continue to walk you through this.
Thank you. And thank you, City Manager.
Mrs. Gress deserves a standing ovation, in my opinion, for the mountains that she has moved in the past months. She has done an incredible amount of cleanup and, and disposal of the things out of the property. Everything, everything that we all thought was damn near impossible, she has done. So let me be the first.
Thank you, Mrs. Gress, for your work on this, and Mr. Friar for, for sticking with her through this. I know that, that kind of work is not fun or easy. Well, demo work is, so maybe it'll be fun soon.
Would you like your question answered on the bids? Or, okay. Just wanted to make sure we were still there.
What was my question?
Of when we would go out for the bids, or when we would want to place the bids out there. And I think...
Can you speak up so we can hear you?
Oh, sure. Let me raise that up just a little bit. Get a little closer. You're welcome. So, yeah, I think that would be fine. I mean, you know, if we go in front of the Landmark Commission, that would still give a timeframe, because then we still have to come back to City Council. So if the, if the failure was to not submit the appeal to City Council, then we'd move forward with the bids.
Is there any action item required on this?
No.
Thank you. Next item, please. Actually, we're going to take a five-minute potty break.
I think they call it recess.
Recession.
Thank you for that recess. Next item, please.
Item 9B, update on 3405 East Fourth Avenue.
Good evening again, City Council. Jason Lady, building official. This is an update on the unsafe and dangerous structure at 3405 East Fourth Avenue. So on April 1st, 2025, at the City Council meeting, staff provided an update on the condition of the structure located at 3405 East Fourth Avenue. Since that time, staff has met with the property owner, Mr. Brazier, and his architect. Structural plans have been submitted, and the building permit has been issued to address the collapse of the south loading dock. Additionally, a code footprint, preliminary code analysis have been received. While full code review of these documents is still pending, initial staff assessment indicates likely compliance with the city adopted codes. We haven't completed the full compliance review because we're still awaiting some of the plans. There's an electrical plan that he just submitted to me the other day. There's going to be some things needed. We're going to have to make some comments back on. There's a couple. We're waiting for a plumbing plan. We're discussing whether to move the restrooms right now or not. So there is a lot of discussion back and forth on this property. As of this, as of the date of this report, a formal building permit application has not really been submitted. However, staff remains in active communication with Mr. Brazier and is waiting the submission of the complete structural evaluation, along with the rest of the mechanical and plumbing. We do have the electrical. I know it's in the staff reported on the electrical, but he did submit it by the time I wrote this report. And then I, so those plans are required for a comprehensive review of the permit. So we won't do that or start that review, really, that comprehensive review until we get all the plans at one time. But staff's recommendation on this is that we would recommend that this item be removed from any future agendas. Based on the progress to date and then ongoing communication, we believe that the property owner is making a good faith effort to prepare for a full renovation of the structure. If a building permit is not applied for or significant process is not made in the next 180 days, then staff will bring this back to City Council for further review.
Very good news. Thank you. Do we need to vote on that or just don't bring it back to us?
No. Safe first point, just don't bring it back to you.
I just want to thank all my council members and Jason for bearing with me on this because I felt like this guy was going to turn this place around. And I know it was a little trying at some points, but I like to see it when we make a business succeed.
Yeah, I agree, and I think we work together to get that done. I know that it was hard for me to not just push forward and bulldoze it, but I think that it worked out.
I do appreciate that.
Yeah.
And he has had some success out there right now. He does have a structural permit right now for the south loading docks, and that includes reskinning that south loading dock to enclose it too. So that'll get that closed back up out there.
Awesome.
I think this meets the, like I said just a bit ago, the goal of owner rehabilitation or owner demolition. The goal of these hearings is never for us to step in and do the demolition ourselves. It is always to shed light on the issues and then kind of hold their hand along the way to get them to this place. And he's almost there, but almost there enough that we do feel comfortable not hearing this again. So just a process question, does this close the case on, you said to not bring this up, however, if you don't see things progressing, do we start our process all over again for condemnation? What does that process look like if he does not move forward with getting you the plans and whatnot?
Well, the condemnation has never been approved. These have all just been updates because this has just been extended out. So the condemnation's never been approved. But we would just bring this back because it's still an open case as far as the property maintenance and code violations and calling it, deeming it by myself as an unsafe and dangerous structure. Yeah.
So when we can close that as a case?
Typically, we close that as a case when the building permit would be issued. I mean, in some rare cases, I've held him open past that just because they're kind of special cases. But I mean, usually the intent of an owner, once they get a full building permit and you see progress as being made, especially if he finishes up this structural permit and gets that south loading dock enclosed and everything goes good there, I mean, you can see at that point, the intention is probably is to finish up the rest of the building too. So we'll probably close the case once, once he gets the full building permit.
I'm glad, and I hadn't heard from Mr. Brazier this week. No, I did, actually. He asked if we were, if we intended to remove this from consideration. I told him that that was the intention. However, I didn't know that he wasn't going to be here. Obviously, his presence isn't required, but I just want to give public acknowledgement of the ton of work that he put in. He paid the back taxes. He got ownership of the building. He just took one bite at a time at the massive to-do list that was this, saving this building. And I know that he has a lot of plans for his business and for growth, and I think that we'll see all of that come to fruition in the coming years, so.
Yeah, and I spoke to Mr. Brazier last week, and I let him know the intentions of staff. And I told him that, hey, you don't need to be there. If you would like to be there, that's great, but he had some other things he had to take care of that he couldn't be here tonight, so.
I think what's so interesting for me is all these cases are so different. Every one has their own uniqueness. Anyway, awesome. Thanks.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Item number 9C, Woody Seat Freeway over KNO Railroad and Avenue C bid results.
Good evening, Council. Justin Karim, Construction Manager, Engineering Division. So the purpose of this project is to perform full-depth repairs to the median and outside barriers of the Avenue C Bridge and to perform maintenance to the bridge deck with concrete patching and a 2.25-inch Portland cement concrete overlay. So this project is anticipated to begin this fall alongside the Woody Seat Phase II project. Once Phase II is complete, the new Avenue A Roundabout will be open to east and westbound traffic with the full Woody Seat Freeway opening to traffic at the completion of the bridge repairs. The project has substantial completion date of June 28th, 2026. J O Consulting Group designed and sealed this project. This project was approved in the 2024 CIP budget utilizing general obligation bonds. So a little bit on the bid information, four bids were received and opened on June 17th. The low bid was submitted by Wildcat Construction in the amount of $1,459,096. The bid is above the engineer's estimate, which was $1,309,000. Reviewing all the bids received and the unit costs, we found that submitted prices were in line with market expectations. I believe we received a favorable and competitive bid for the project. Little history on Wildcat. Wildcat Construction had previously performed work for the city of Hutchinson. In 2024, Wildcat Construction completed our Severn Street emergency waterline repair project. This work included completing an emergency repair to a critical 24-inch water main on Severn Street. Wildcat Construction is well-known in the bridge construction and maintenance sector, having recently performed work on the K-61 railroad bridges near Avenue A in Hutchinson for KDOT. They also recently completed projects in Wichita, expanding the expressway from Rock Road to the K-96 interchange, which included the construction of multiple new bridges. So our recommendation, so we recommend that the Council approve the low bid and award the project to Wildcat Construction in the amount of $1,459,096 and authorize the mayor to sign. Answer any questions you may have.
I have a question. This is the damage that was discovered after the first round of construction was completed. Is that correct or during that?
So I wouldn't say that it was discovered. So I think when we were evaluating all of Woody Seat Freeway, all the bridges were evaluated. And then at the time, the city knew there was improvements that needed in the whole corridor. So we broke it up into two phases to budget it adequately. And so Avenue C Bridge was not included in those due to budgetary constraints. And so I believe at the time, they decided 2027 was a better time to do that work. So in Phase 1, we did install additional metal guardrail on Avenue C to help make it safe until we got to that date. But as we got closer to finishing Woody Seat Phase 1, we realized this median, these outside barriers, they are definitely in need of some work, and so we asked to expedite that. Ultimately, we wanted to have this be part of the bid package for Woody Seat Phase 2, getting the projects and the design completed. We did have to go through WATCO to get that approved because it is over their railway. And while they were great partners, it did delay our ability to join those together. So that's why we're here today, so.
So is this 1.459 million, is this considered over budget for the Woody Seat?
Yeah, so I think originally in the 2024, we had earmarked 1 million for CIP. But at that time, obviously, if you, if this was combined with the Phase 2 project, we would get more competitive bids. You don't have to have additional bonding. It's not a standalone project. You get some cost savings with that. And so now, today, we did bid this before, and we had zero bids in return due to the date that we had set to make it coincide with Woody Seat Phase 2 completion. So that was too tight of a schedule, so we did extend that a little bit, but it still is a tight schedule for the project, especially, these are big projects, big contractors. They're booked, and so to get in on somebody's schedule, you are going to have to pay up a little bit for that. So I think that's what we're seeing in some of these costs increase with this project.
Thank you.
And I will note, as far as the funding, we were quite a bit under on Woody Seat Phase 2 as far as what we were going to put towards bonding, and we saw the ARPA funds apply there, which is about 600,000. So while it's not directly being paid for bonding under Woody Seat Phase 2, we are saving bonding capacity there, so we should have the ability to expand this one ideally.
Any questions from Council?
No. I'll move to accept the bid of Wildcat Construction Company Incorporated for the Woody Seat Freeway over the KNO Railroad and Avenue C as outlined in the enclosed documents in the amount of $1,459,096 and $96 and authorize the mayor to sign.
Second.
Richardson?
Yes.
Garza?
Yes.
Bass?
Yes.
Magers?
Yes.
Goss?
Yes.
Item 9D, stormwater discussion.
Good evening, Council. Evan Patterson, City Engineer. I'm here to talk tonight specifically about floodplains. And I have a fairly lengthy presentation, so I gave all of you hard copies. I don't expect you to absorb it all the night, so I figured either you want to make notes or have something that you could refer back to later. I also have a number of other people here tonight in support of this presentation. Joanna Rolfe joined us from Topeka. She is the floodplain mapping coordinator for our floodplain mapping project. She's in the Kansas Department of Agriculture's Division of Water Resources. I also have Alongo Thavar from NEAR on a Zoom connection. He's a civil and environmental engineer out of the Kansas City area who's done lots of work validating the stormwater models that inform these floodplain maps. I also have Dave Inskey in the audience. Dave is here as a member of the local insurance community and as a past participant in a floodplain map update on the City Council the last time we went through this. I also wanted to introduce our new stormwater management coordinator, Dayton Amor. He's a week and a half into the job, and I have lots of high hopes for his ability to help us tackle some of these challenges. Alan Fee has said he's also available to answer insurance questions. He wasn't able to make it, but if you or the audience has any questions that we're not able to answer tonight, we can always send those over to him. So I have a couple of different parts of the talk tonight. I want to talk about why we're here, why am I here tonight talking to you about floodplains? I want to talk about how these floodplains and the maps are developed. The city has some actions that we can take as an institution to respond to the risk of flooding, and individuals have actions that they also can take in response to either flooding or their properties being in the floodplain. And then I'll wrap it up with questions. So why are we here? We don't have a new floodplain map yet, so why am I here in the middle of July talking about floodplains? Well, it's because we have a current floodplain map that's being worked on. And on the right-hand side of the screen, you can see the current map. The updated maps, the draft ones are not ready yet to present, so I can't show you that, but they're serious enough that I feel we need to talk about this in advance, so we're prepared for when those draft maps actually come out. We joked internally that the previews we've seen are as if someone had thrown a tomato at the old map, and the splatter was the areas that are now in the floodplain. So there's some possibility of significant additions to areas in the floodplain. And that's the issue that I want to talk about today, and I want to talk about what we as the city and what individuals can do to address either the floodplain maps before they're issued or the consequences once they are. So floodplain maps. I want to confirm because sometimes we use casual language to describe things like floods and storms, and I want to describe some of the technical applications of that language to make sure we're all on the same page. So I'm going to talk about what a flood is, how we classify storms, what is a floodplain? What kind of flooding do we have in the city of Hutchinson? And then who really decides what is a floodplain and what's in the floodplain and why are we updating these maps and how often? When have we had updates to our maps? And then Joanna is going to talk about the status of our current mapping project. So the National Flood Insurance Program, which Hutchinson's a participation, excuse me, a participant in, defines a flood as a general and temporary condition of partial or complete inundation of two or more acres of normally dry land area or of two or more properties, at least one of which is your property. And there are four different cases. The highlighted yellow one is really what we see here in Hutchinson. It's unusual and rapid accumulation or runoff of surface waters from any source. So we classify storms according to collecting historical data and using these statistical methods to determine what's the likelihood of a storm of a certain size. So you guys may have heard terms like 100-year storm or 1% probability storm. And sometimes we play around with which of those terms really applies. The criteria for floodplains is based on the 1% probability storm, but here in Hutch, we're lucky that we have two events in recent history that we can use as analogs for those curves. Back in August 2013, we had a 100-year storm. So if you guys remember back to that, that's the sort of rainfall or flooding that you could associate with a 100-year storm. If you want to see a 500-year storm, you got to think a little farther back. We had one of those in May 2007. We had fairly serious rain in the area in 2019. Those are actually 100-year storms, but they weren't for Hutch. They were upriver. So while they'd apply to lines, they don't actually apply to us. So when we're talking about 100-year storms, that's the 2013 event is, try to picture that in your mind. So we've talked about storms, we've talked about floods, but what is a floodplain? Well, that's the area that we figure is going to be inundated in that 100-year storm, that 2013 storm. So we use sophisticated computer models to map out what that area looks like, and anything that's going to get inundated ends up in the floodplain. There's a more risky area called a floodway, and that's the area that's flooded even more commonly, and it's usually high-energy flooding. We're not talking about that during this presentation. We're only talking about the floodplain. So there are a couple of different types of flooding. There's river or pluvial flooding, flash flooding, surface or pluvial flooding, and groundwater flooding. Here in Hutch, our stormwater management systems are designed to handle two of those specifically, river flooding and surface flooding. Our levee protection system is for the river or pluvial, and this is not something that's going to be talked much about during this presentation because it's not going to be revised in the upcoming map update. Our levee system works. It was classified fairly recently, I think, or certified in 2017. We don't have any issues with it, and it protects us from those big storm events coming from upriver. I hate to tie it into a tragic recent event, but what they saw in Texas is the sort of thing that this protects us from. So we're not going to be talking about risk to life for the kinds of flooding that potentially will be identified in the new maps. Instead, that's the pluvial or surface flooding. So we have a whole network of drainage ditches throughout Hutchinson that's designed to convey that surface water to the Cow Creek and eventually the Ark River. The map on the right shows the various drainage areas, and we have all sorts of drainage ditches associated with those. Some of them are up a channel, some of them go underground, but at the end of the day, they all generally collect all that water and take it to the southeast part of the town. And both the levee system and the drainage systems are managed by the City of Hutchinson Public Works Department. Excuse me. So who actually defines these floodplains? Well, the relevant federal agencies, the Federal Emergency Management Agency, or FEMA, they set the standards for these maps, but the state since 1999 has actually been in charge of running the projects to determine the mapping themselves. But the state, since 1999, has actually been in charge of running the projects to determine the mapping themselves. So they coordinate with consultants to have hydrology and hydraulic studies. They set the specific criteria for each of the watersheds they're looking at. So the state does all the work on the maps and then submits the maps to FEMA to be published. We've had federal insurance rate maps updated about every 10 years, at least in the last 40 years or so. They were paper for a while until the Department of Water Resources started implementing digital firms, which are the ones where you can go browse online and determine what your property looks like. The first one of those was in 2010, and our most recent one was in 2021, and that's the floodplain map that we're operating under right now. So now, Joanna, if you can give an update on the current project.
Thanks, Evan, and thanks for having me here. And I'm just going to briefly talk about this and then hand it back over to Evan. And just for your knowledge, I have been involved in previous mapping projects with Reno County. I was involved in that 2021 study, so I have some history, a knowledge of the history of it as well. So we started this in 2022. It's actually the follow-up to a base level engineering project that was part of our statewide initiative to get floodplain mapping across the state. There was a lot of parts of the state that didn't have any flood risk information, and it was captured in one of those watersheds that we did that. It was a, known as a need to update the rest of the county because that available LiDAR data, that's high-resolution terrain data, that makes the floodplain maps more accurate, and the goal is to make accurate floodplain maps. So since 2022, we've been working on refining those models. I'm using a lot of data that was provided by the City of Hutchinson and collecting some survey and that sort of thing to enhance those models. So the next step is for a community review of those results. We expect to have a flood risk review meeting in August, probably late August. At the very latest, it would be September when we have that meeting. And we send out, usually through email correspondence, we send out the meeting invites for that, for that meeting. So Evan and other staff would be included on that, and we can include anybody that you would like to as part of that correspondence. And so to get to a final effective map, the earliest it would be 2027. I think that's pretty optimistic. I think it would be a little later. We don't want to rush the project. We want you guys to have time to review and provide comment on the maps.
Thank you, Joanna. Okay, so we have this pending floodplain map panel of this. What can the city do to address the problem of this map? So one of the things we're going to focus on now is validating the models used to create those maps. We want to make sure that whatever is actually issued is accurate. So we have a number of tools that we can use to do that, and I'll talk about it. We also have begun identifying projects that the city can perform that we think will be beneficial to our floodplain, our stormwater management systems. We're also going to continue to advance our existing project list and pursue assistance for other mitigation projects. We've also identified that we need to have certified floodplain managers on staff. We don't have any right now. So what kind of work can we do to validate these proposed models? So these complex computer models use a bunch of inputs, and then they produce an output. There's always a lot of talk about what are those inputs? So we're going to spend some time reviewing the kind of rainfall curves that were used to program the storms in these models. Do they match what Hutchinson has seen historically? We have, I think, 80 years of historical rainfall data from the airports. We have lots of good data to inspect and find out if, is this a storm that perhaps gives too much rainfall in too short of a period? And that's why we're seeing the map showing that the town's overwhelmed, or does it have the right duration? And it truly is modeling how the rainfall falls on Hutch. We can also look at some previous studies that we had done and see how those maps and models correspond to the one produced by the consultant. We can also look at information that we've collected from City of Hutchinson staff on intersections in town that are flooded or photos and video that we have. I also have on the line Alongo Thavar of NEAR, who's a civil and environmental engineer from the Johnson County area. And Alongo, if you can talk a little bit about some of the work you've done previously reviewing some of these models, I think that'd be great. Alongo?
Thank you, Yvonne. Good evening, council. Sorry, apologies. I wouldn't be able to make it in person. But yeah, I've been in the civil engineering field for almost...
Alongo, sorry, hold on one second.
And repeat everything you just said.
Yeah, can you start over, please?
Sorry.
Sorry, I had to just crank you up a little bit.
Oh, no worries. Yeah, thank you so much, Yvonne. You know, apologize not to be in person. I've been spending in the industry for almost more than 20 years as a civil engineer. Developed a lot of floodplain maps all over the United States and mainly spent a lot of time in the Kansas City metro, developing floodplain maps, 1D, 2D models, which is what most currently the state is doing for all the counties to, you know, increase the accuracy of the floodplain risk. I've worked on a lot of counties in the Kansas City metro, also reviewed a lot of models. There's always challenges, you know, this new floodplain maps comes in, it kind of overwhelms the city. So very excited to, you know, help City of Hutchinson in this process. We have a team of more than 10 people in Kansas City metro in my firm. This is what we do on a daily basis, you know, developing floodplain maps and also addressing the stormwater problems in the city. So happy to answer any, you know, questions from the council on this process.
Okay. Thank you, Alongo. He'll be on at the end of the presentation as well. If you have questions for him, then... Let me see here. Oh, sorry.
Yeah. No, sorry, man.
I'll start away from the computer.
I messed it all up for you, didn't I? This is the right one?
Yes, sir.
Okay. What, it started over?
That's right. It's only like 70 slides or something. Okay.
Am I too far?
Nope. Perfect. And we have talked to the state. They're working to make available the models that were used by their consultant that we can provide to Alongo and JEO, who's also working to evaluate the validity of the models. So one of the other things that we've been talking about internally is that we have this window of opportunity. Joanna mentioned that there's some time before these maps are going to get finalized. And if the city makes changes to our stormwater management systems before the final review period, the state's willing to take those changes into account and rerun the models. So we're going to, we're putting together a list right now of small self-perform projects that we can do in that period that we think will have an impact on the system capacity. And in parallel, we're working with JEO to make sure that not only do those projects actually make sense, but that we get the amount of, the right kind of information from those projects to then provide to Joanna's team so that they can document in the model correctly. Doesn't do any good if we do it if they can't model it. So this is a map of our initial pass-through of spots in the city. We have some other ones that we're still considering, but these are some of the high-level ones. Our criteria was, we needed to be able to do it in a year because we want to be able to beat the timeline. We need to be able to do it solely with city staff. We don't have the time or the luxury to contract this out, so it's got to be mostly dirt moving. These spots need to be adjacent to our existing stormwater drainage network. Otherwise, it's much harder to connect them hydraulically. And we need to own the property as well that we're planning on doing this on because we don't have the time to go through a lengthy property acquisition process. So with that four criteria, we've identified a handful of spots. One of the examples is the land just across Cow Creek from the Boys and Girls Club. It's kind of landlocked. It's not really accessible to traffic. There's actually originally a lake, so we know it's been used for a reservoir for water before. And Cow Creek needs capacity, so the city can go over there, lower the terrain in that area to a point above Cow Creek's normal levels where it will have more storage in the case of a storm event, so that we're holding the water there and not on the surface.
And all of the Boys and Girls Club and Shattuck Park is on the opposite side of the...
That's right. So we won't do anything on the southwest side, I guess. It's kind of where the Boys and Girls Club and Shattuck Park is. We won't touch that. It's really that section over on the other side that is...
Would there be any reinforcement on the southwest bank that forces it that way? Or does the water just naturally go over there?
We could talk to JEO about that. I don't think we'd need anything. We'd have to look at whether we need to armor, like with riprap or anything, any of those. It's usually when you're trying to change direction, so it might be, say, if we make some kind of a basin, maybe the downstream side of that might need something. But again, it's an area where we're going to remove dirt, and the displacement of that dirt allows water to drain off the surface of the town and into our stormwater drainage systems. And all the other projects we're looking at are very similar. Some of the land we acquired as part of the Cow Creek project, so that's also available for the same kind of little pocket ponds. At the same time, the projects that we've been talking about for 10 years still have value. They, in fact, may even have better value. We're going to rerun the cost-benefit analysis with the new proposed maps once they're published. And all the additional floodplain, if it actually shows up, will likely increase the benefit because there will be more area to pull out of the floodplain. At the same time, we're going to review these projects to see, are there parts of them that we can pull out to self-perform? Is there dirt we can move? Is there some concrete work? And that's going to lower the cost, so we're tackling the numerator by making it bigger, the denominator by making it smaller, so hopefully increasing the cost-benefit ratio for these, which is important when we get to the next slide. So when we're looking for assistance, for example, from FEMA's Hazard Mitigation Assistance Program, the benefit-cost ratio is one of the elements they look at when they're judging which projects to grant money to. These are the numbers from back in 2017 when we first evaluated those projects. And at the time, Second and Cleveland had the highest BCR, so that's the one that we worked with Joanna's team to see if we could get FEMA money to help out. Cow Creek, oddly enough, had a terrible BCR at the time. It didn't even meet the limit, which I think is, the minimum is like 1.0. Yeah. I've talked to the project manager for WSP fairly recently about it with the changes. It's more like a seven, which pushes it up to the top of the list. So it's a good candidate once we finish the design for going back to talk to FEMA. But once we evaluate it in the context of not only the new maps, but if we can carve off parts of that project to perform ourselves, maybe the BCR goes even higher, or, yeah, BCR. Also, we need to have certified floodplain managers on staff. It's actually necessary for us to participate in certain flood risk mitigation programs, like the program to reduce insurance costs within the city. And we have to have a certified floodplain manager order participate in that. It also makes technical floodplain resources available in-house rather than using consultants, which is more efficient for us. And it expands our capacity to manage floodplain-related responsibilities. Okay, so we've talked about why we're in this situation. We've talked about what the city can do. Now I want to talk about what individuals should and can do when the floodplain maps come out. I'm going to talk about how you determine whether or not your property is actually in the floodplain. I'm going to talk about some of the process for challenging that. And then if you have to, I'm going to talk about how you get flood insurance.
Evan, I have a question here. Are we talking about when the preliminary maps come out or when the official maps come out in 2027?
Both, because you can evaluate it when the preliminary maps, at least by looking at the maps. I don't think you can get a certificate yet until it's actually final. Is that right? Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, you can do the elevation certificate and make it apply once it goes final. But yeah, it really wouldn't have the insurance burden until it's there in the floodplain. So that would be when it's effective or closer.
Okay.
So right now, a home showing in the, I haven't looked forward. I assume you have a map coming up soon?
No map. They're not ready yet.
Okay. So if a home or a property is in the map that we see soon, no action is really required? Maybe you're getting rid of a couple of this, but...
It's not. It's just, it's a consideration that the homeowner needs to take. They could accomplish, say, raising the, if they haven't built yet, they could raise the building elevation sufficiently and then apply to the state, just like we're going to do for the city, because you've now revised that before the map's made. You probably still have to go through the trouble of getting an official survey, but I suspect the state would take that into account so that you're not having to apply for the letter of map change. Yeah, we're going to go through all this again once the draft maps are out. So floodplain maps are published online by both KDA and FEMA, but FEMA publishes the flood insurance rate maps, which is the one that really defines whether or not you're in the floodplain zones. And these usually show what's called the base flood elevation, which is, again, for that 2013 storm, that's the level of water we expect to have in that area. So, excuse me. Hutchinson City Code does not permit development in the floodplain unless you get a floodplain development permit. And that has some special requirements that are beyond a normal permit. We may require you to use special materials or construction. Your lowest floor that you occupy has to be at least a foot higher than that base elevation. So whatever the firm says for your base elevation, that's where your warehouse needs to be elevated above. And accessory structures such as sheds may have additional requirements, depending on what you're going to do with them. So if you believe that your property's in the floodplain, and it shouldn't be, you can submit information to the state mapping team or FEMA to have that revised and removed from the floodplain. Excuse me. You need to talk to a licensed surveyor or a professional engineer about documenting that and putting together this elevation certificate, and then that gets sent over. And they produce either a letter of map amendment or a letter of map revision based on fill, which is when you've brought in a bunch of dirt and raised the elevation in that area. The problem is, even if you get those letters, a mortgage lender may still require you to get flood insurance. So that's something maybe to check with your insurer before you go through the process, because this is, this has costs. I think a typical survey costs around $1,000. So these are real costs for homeowners.
I have a question here, and a mortgage company can require flood insurance at any point in the year. Is that correct on an existing mortgage or on a new?
Joanna?
Yeah, so flood insurance requirement is at the discretion of the mortgage companies, but they are required to require it when they're in that special flood hazard area, that 1% annual chance floodplain. And so a letter of map change, a letter of map revision, or a letter of map amendment, it removes that designation as being in that special flood hazard area. So typically, they don't require it at that point, but there's always that caveat that they could. I'm not aware of any that they have, but it's a possibility. Did I answer your question?
Kind of. So this map, as it stands, and I understand that it could go through a series of revisions up to 2027, should we anticipate that residents in Hutchinson will receive notification from their mortgage company that they are now required to carry flood insurance?
They will receive notification after the maps go effective, which would be within six months of the maps going effective. Yeah, in 2027, if that date holds, which, you know, based on some of the discussion with some of these, if those projects go through, if you provide us data, that's going to push it out. So it's very tentative and it's very optimistic in terms of that, so.
Joanna, I have a question. Why, if we just did this in '21, why have the maps changed so much? Because we're not seeing the preliminary map, although Stacy and I have seen it, and it's a very big tomato that's been thrown at that map. It's like, how did we get it so wrong before?
So 2021 was simply, or was specific to the levee certification. So there was five streams specifically, Cow Creek, Old Channel, Cow Creek, Ark River, GVI, and Harsh, I think, were the five streams specifically included in that update. And no other streams outside of that were included. So that 2010 update, I don't know if that had any, it didn't look at any studies inside the city of Hutchinson that were a detailed study, so not the approximate ones without the base flood elevations in any new detail. So a lot of your studies, like for the Plum Creek... So a lot of your studies, like for the Plum Creek, I think my date from like the 1980s potentially, I'm not quite sure on the date of it, but they're very old. Some of them are.
Well, that's a, that's a good answer. I mean, that's 15 years ago.
Greg, I think Evan's explanation of that was that in 2017, they were looking just at those rivers, not the levy. They weren't looking at the surface water.
Yeah, it was essentially taking the data that you're, you're, the city of Hutchinson, I think Reno County might have pitched in. In, in getting that levy certification effort completed, the data that you had funded and created and putting that on a map.
When these, when these updates are made, are, are the, is the data updated? And does it change what we consider a 100 year or 500 year storm event? Is that solely based on Hutchinson? Is it also based on comparable communities around us with time of storm, storm events they get?
So it will be different than what has been previously used because there's new data available. For example, the hydrology will use the Atlas 14 hydrology rainfall data. Which previous studies, I think any study in Hutchinson and Reno County, I would have to double check to be 100% sure. Would have used, I think, a technical paper from the 60s previously. So it's, it was using very old data at that time. So at least we're using something a lot more, more recent. There has been, so that's one of the things that changes that. So it looks like changes in climate patterns. So yeah, the numbers do change and it's kind of a, really realistically a constant change, but we're not really looking at it as a constant change. We're kind of looking at the data we have and evaluating it based off of the information we have today.
And are we just using the data within the city of Hutchinson Airport? Are we comparing it? Even though it may not be as accurate, it's still somewhat, there's a sniff test to it, to what Wichita sees, Salina, McPherson, these other neighboring communities. Because if we find out that we have outliers in Hutchinson, let's say, just, let's say a five inch an hour storm, I'm just guessing. In Hutch and all the others are four inch an hour, we're going to say, hey, wait a minute, we kind of had a fluke daddy here that's throwing us off. How do, and are they comparable studies?
Um, so, I mean, we don't, I mean, water doesn't stop at county boundaries or city boundaries and that sort of thing. So we're, we're definitely looking at these more in a watershed holistic approach. And you definitely have some county neighbors that are going through a similar process. So we're looking at that together. And we, we do have engineers that are working on this, that have a lot of familiarity with Kansas flooding. And Kansas watersheds and have worked in Central County on that sort of thing. And, and Rice County was a few years ago. So I think the sniff test is there. Kind of, does this feel right compared to what we've seen elsewhere in similar situations? So yes, that does, that is a consideration. For the big rivers, we use gauge data to look at, to calibrate, to make sure they run a statistical analysis on that gauge data. And so the models need to be in that calibrated at those gauge locations as well. So those, that's another way that it gets validated. Any other questions for me or hand it back over to Evan for the remainder?
Yeah, no, no, you're, I'm good.
I will say, based on my previous professional experience, we are in a fairly information rich area here. I've done a bunch of precipitation modeling out west where it's a little more sparse. And we've had to interpolate a lot and you're, much like in Jurassic Park, you're plugging the holes in the models with stuff from other places. So there is always a question of noise in the datas, but we have so much information, so dense here. It's fairly easy to iron out those wrinkles. Okay, so flood insurance. Flood insurance may be required if you have a mortgage company or a loan company. Hutchinson participates in the National Flood Insurance Program, so that's available to anyone in the city of Hutchinson. There are some limits, I think 250K for residences, 500K for commercial. There is private flood insurance available and you can choose that in lieu of participating in the NFIP or have it supplemental. And those limits are quite a bit higher up in the millions of dollars. The insurance rate doesn't depend on the flood zone. Instead, they'll look at things like your housing construction or structure type, your proximity to a flooding source, the height of your first occupied floor. How much does it cost to rebuild your house if it does get flooded and damaged? What are other claims in the area?
I have a question on that.
Yes, hold on.
Sorry, if I, if I don't think of something, I'll completely forget about it.
Sure.
Once upon a time, and Mr. Enke's back there, he was on planning and zoning with me. Does our code allow people to rebuild if we don't allow construction in a flood zone? If it's within a certain elevation and the house is existing, non compliant? And let's say it burns down, they want to rebuild. We're going to allow them to rebuild, non compliant? And I think that's more of a city of Hutch question.
I can, I can answer this. So there's something, something called a substantial damage requirement. And so if, I believe it's 50%, if 50% of the value of the home is damaged or the cost to replace it. It does need to bring, be brought into compliance. So you can't have something burned down and then rebuild exactly as it was.
Okay.
You'd have to do that.
And it doesn't, yeah, so fire, windstorm, it doesn't have to be a flood for that damage to occur.
That maybe, yeah, that might be more of a flood insurance, insurance question. If, if I have 51% damage to my structure, who's paying to bring it up to code to comply?
I mean, I think that's generally going to be the homeowner that has to do that and.
I don't like that answer.
It's a tough one. I can tell you, we've had some tough disagreements.
No, I appreciate that. I don't appreciate the answer, but I appreciate you did, that you did answer it. How's that?
So that's it. I hope that I've conveyed that we're working hard to do our best to get ahead of the maps getting published. And try to get as much done as we can to reduce the problem to something manageable. I know it's hard to talk about it. Well, we don't actually have the maps in front of us yet, but there's a lot to cover and that's why I wanted to do it ahead of time. Do you have any questions from me or the other attendees or?
I have a question about the projects. And this is a conversation that you and I had via email about Cow Creek.
Yes.
Widenening. So the original intent, my understanding is that the stormwater fee was to work on the infrastructure. That removes the stormwater from all around Hutch. So the biggest and first priority of that study was to widen Cow Creek. You told me that you essentially reevaluated that study and just not, before we found out about the maps. You made it sound like Cow Creek was no longer a priority and that it wasn't, the widening of Cow Creek was not going to move forward as is.
That's right.
It may happen in bits and pieces, but not as big of a project as it had been intended.
Some of that was because I, I had not fully gotten up to speed yet and I apologize for misinformation.
That's okay. So my assumption now is that Cow Creek, based on the project, it's number six on that project.
Yeah.
So Cow Creek is now back on the table, but not necessarily in the same. I don't know, format that it was when the stormwater study that originated with the stormwater fee.
Correct. It's in a lot of ways still the same concept. The problem that we ran into was the, the Cow Creek project, in order to really gain any benefits. Has to be widened in the area of that whole slew of railroad bridges right around GE and Plum. And that was challenging to negotiate and we actually gave up for one out of the, I think, four railroad companies that we were trying to work with. However, we've gotten to a point with the other ones where they've all agreed to either let us demolish their structures or demolish and rebuild something wider. That's a big cost. We can't do that in-house. But it's something that does allow a lot of those other projects upstream to pass water more quickly into the Cow Creek. So we've got two basic solutions for dealing with surface water in Hutch. Either we build storage or we speed up the conveyance. Cow Creek is important for speeding up the conveyance.
So the funds that we have in the stormwater fee account, if you will, budget item, whatever. Are they adequate to do the Cow Creek project itself?
I'm not sure. We've been talking a lot about that because I'm trying to understand how we've broken up the money in the various stormwater projects. And I'm trying to determine what do we have in separate funds and what did we just identify that we were going to put in separate funds?
And so these projects that you identified with the map and the yellow dots are those projects that are eligible to use our existing stormwater fee funds?
They are, yes. They will be, they will be executed by people and equipment that are funded under stormwater and are dedicated to stormwater.
Okay. Are there detention basins or ponds that are not connected to creeks? Or other bodies of water that, that other residences or like building sites? Need to be considering on purchasing extra land to build additional retention ponds? Is that something that we're, we would be advising people to do if they have, for instance, a large construction project? Or housing development that they're moving forward on in the next three years?
They are, we are already required to do some of that.
Right, but are they, are we looking at advising them to do bigger ponds or bigger?
I, I think that's a good question. I think we would advise them, once, once the maps are released, the draft maps are published. We would make sure they're informed about that and some of the possible consequences. That investing more in more storage or diversion may benefit them down the line. If that helps them be removed from the floodplain. The assessment of which projects make sense, it's a little hard to predict. But for example, one of the areas identified by the school district for possible location of a school. Looks like it's in the floodplain in the new maps. However, one of the things that Joanna and I have talked about that's important is right now, the definition of the floodplain runs out to any, any amount of standing water. Could be an inch. So one of the things that's within their discretion is to evaluate, what's it look like if we carve off that fringe? You know, the boundary where it's say, an inch to three inches, what does that floodplain then look like? Because an inch of standing water, not the same condition as several feet of water. So that's something they're working with their consultant to evaluate. And that property specifically may just be in really shallow floodplain and it may end up out of it in an extra vision.
An inch of water in an $80 million building is not going to go over well with anybody or a $36 million YMCA or?
No, but it's easier to accommodate that sort of.
It is.
Because you're either looking at not having to raise it up that much or, yeah, because the volume to even pull yourself out of the floodplain is quite a bit smaller. You're right. You don't want an inch of water in that, but.
Does, does this, can you go back to your?
Yes, which thing?
This one, pursuing assistance for mitigation projects. Are we still moving forward with the State Fair Detention Basin?
We're finishing up the engineering. We're stuck a little bit on how to spend money. Because one of the problems with the State Fair Detention Basin is that the location is in the middle of just an absolute nest of other utilities, including our own water. And I don't know if I can move those water pipes using stormwater money, which was my original plan. It'd be one thing if it was all part of the same project, but I was planning on doing those in advance. So they'd be out of the way when we put the, the stormwater conveyance pipes in. Now I'm not so sure I can do that with stormwater money, which means we need to reevaluate and figure out how to pay for it. So it's a real dilemma.
And I would add to this. Evan, if you could show the criteria that we're, we're using to vet those projects that we would do internally?
Yes.
So the criteria on that kind of shown here, we're trying to figure out the best bang for our buck for the dollars that we do have. Because the State Fair Detention Basin project in Cow Creek, if we were to pursue those two, would exhaust the available monies that we do have. And so given the fact that we have a tomato launched at the, the city of Hutchinson's map. We're trying to figure, okay, of the, of the likelihood of projects, probably shelving the State Fair Detention Basin project is the most likely. And Cecil had identified at least attractive land that we could use that is city owned. That probably would produce the same effect or better. And so we're really taking a, a hard look at where we can use our dollars more appropriately, so.
This might be a stupid question, but I'm going to ask it anyway.
Sure.
Is there a benefit to closing like the open ditches that we have down Severance and at 17th and, 17th and Severance? I'm thinking specifically the ones that run north and south on Severance.
Sure. I'm not sure. If we just close them in, it depends on what we put in there. If we put pipes in instead of an open channel, it's going to have less storage, which hurts us a little bit. It depends on the case though, like the one along 17th, it doesn't run very long, so we're not talking about taking a lot of capacity out.
Well, and then you have 14th and Cochrane where we just rebuilt that bridge too. That's an open ditch.
Yeah, 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 yeah. Yeah, I mean, that's the, that's the hard trade off about this is if we, if we reduce that, that volume that it can care, or that it can hold or carry. It's going to sit on the surface somewhere. So we can find other ways to compensate for it or would JEO identify if it's not a big impact?
I didn't know if like closing it and putting in pipes made it move out faster than being in.
So without getting into the actual specifics of any of those. What's really the driver with flow in any of our systems is cross sectional area and our hydraulic head. And we have no hydraulic head across the entire town, so. I actually have one last thing that I want to show that may help illustrate some of that. Dayton, you mind grabbing this? So we were playing around, now that we have a stormwater management coordinator, we wanted to think up ideas that, for things that he could use. Props to talk to students at schools or other places to, to communicate what floodplain. If you want to take it up and show them, that'd be fine. Show them what happens in Hutchinson. So we thought about 3D printing it. The problem with 3D printing Hutchinson is because as it is so flat, nothing shows up. So we scaled up the vertical component 20 fold and now you can actually start to see where water moves in Hutchinson and why. Because we do actually have these elevation differences throughout town. So this is our prototype because we were trying to figure out what works.
You gotta get a picture of the show and tell.
But you can see that gigantic ridge up to the northeast. That's part of the river valley. And that's why all this flow stays right in Hutchinson. And even with everything scaled up 20 fold, you can see how flat it is in the center of town. I mean, we have no drop from where the water falls down to the river. So we're really stuck just having large cross sections or large volumes to hold water. If you improve the, the materials, that'll improve some, but there's just, it's not a hydraulic head to really do much. And if the problem was water coming in from outside the city, we could talk about handling that with levies or other things. But it's all the water that falls on the city and ponds. So we've got to just find places to store it. So we're not going to give up. We've got lots of other, some not so great ideas that we're trying to vet. But anything that we can come up with that makes sense, we're going to try to move on before the maps are finalized. So that we can shrink it as much as possible.
Okay, I'm electrician. I'm not a plumber, okay? I can, we'll put pump stations in where the water comes and we pump the water out to.
That's a good question. So this came up from Justin actually the other day. We do it with sanitary sewer all the time, right? So why wouldn't we do that? We do it with our drinking water. Part of the problem is just of scale, the amount of water. I mean, a hundred year storm on Hutchinson is 6 billion gallons, I think. So remember that our water treatment plant processes 5 million gallons a day or something. So this is three orders of magnitude higher than that. And while we wouldn't be pumping everything, what we would pump, it'd be just a lot of infrastructure, it'd be a lot of cost. And it's going to sit there most of the time and not get used.
And those aren't something that you can like, again, stupid question.
Sure.
They don't make like portable ones, like portable generators that you would move and take to a site that you would put in and move things along.
They absolutely do.
Periodically, okay.
And I, I had a project that got hit by a 700 year storm. And we had a whole ream of those around site, just moving water out of the places that were in the middle of construction. So you can certainly do that. That doesn't help us on the floodplain maps, but it does help on say egress from flooded areas. It's just without the infrastructure in place, it's not something that you. It's just, without the infrastructure in place, it's not something that you can turn on immediately.
Like the pump infrastructure down in New Orleans is insane.
Yeah.
If you ever see a documentary on that or look that up, that would give you an idea of what those pumps would look like.
Yeah, yeah. You could certainly pump, but it's just, it's a problem of an entirely different scale.
Just a quick, back in, I think, 2013, or 2019, when we had high water on the levy system for weeks, we actually did rent pumps. The downside of that is, like you said, there is a maintenance cost to get those, get them in place. The other downside is if the levy's full enough, there's nowhere to pump it to. So, it would help in a one-off storm, but if it happens to be those situations where the levy's already completely at capacity, where do you pump the water to? Because everything we do pump out pumps outside of our levy system. So, that, it is a possibility, but like you said, it takes some really big pumps and a lot of them to really make a dent.
Our best bet is capacity, along Cow Creek mostly.
We can do it along Cow Creek. Cow Creek is essential for getting it out of the city faster. We could do detention ponds elsewhere in the city. I mean, the attractive thing about the state fair detention pond is that we're providing a green space in addition to just a detention pond. So, that's something we've been talking a little bit about, is how do you integrate some of these perk-like features with these utilitarian elements so that you benefit the city both to the infrastructure and to, you know, the overall feel of the city. So, we've talked a little bit, he left earlier, but we talked with Justin Combs about some of the areas in town that he would like to see improvements to and whether or not we could coordinate the work of moving dirt with some of the places that he'd like to modify as well. So, we're trying to snatch any of those synergies we can, but it's going to take some coordination.
Real quick, I don't know how to put this question to you. Is there a warning time like Texas, so much fell in so many, in an hour, eight, 12 inches, I don't know. When will we get to that state where it's all, all the tomato will be up? You understand what I'm saying? Will it take seven inches of rain in two hours in order for us to get to that part? I mean...
So, that's a good question. You can see how with, I should have highlighted it on here and I didn't, the hundred-year storm, most of that rain comes in the first couple hours. And that's the same with a lot of these curves, is that what you're experiencing is generally, because if it's, if it's less dense rainfall over longer periods, our systems can handle that. We don't convey fast, but we convey a lot of water slowly. It's those dense, short, dense rainstorms that are going to saturate our system. And that's when we have problems. I mean, we get 30-some inches of rain a year and 99% of that isn't a problem because it's either, you know, just sprinkles throughout an entire day or intermittent and we don't, we don't overcharge all of our systems. That's the other part that I haven't really talked about, is one of the other ways we have of getting rid of all that water is when it percolates into the groundwater system. So, some of these detention ponds, like the state fair detention pond, are going to contribute to the groundwater, which is great, that's what we want, but it's also a way of getting it out of the city. It just requires these places to hold it. We have soaker ditches all over town, like along Monroe. They're not actually designed to convey it, they just hold the water until it evaporates or percolates.
So, since we don't know how long it takes, this might not ever happen. You just, you understand what I'm saying? It might, might not ever come to the big old tomato all over the city.
It might not. There is a statistical possibility it will never happen again. But it has. I wasn't here in 2013, but my parents were, so I got all the reports from my mom texting me about how bad the storm was. And I remember some from in the 90s that were pretty bad. We get rainfall, it's probably going to happen again. And it doesn't even take a hundred-year storm. We've evaluated some of the areas of town where we see flooding with two and 10-year storms. I mean, that's primarily what the state fair detention basin was designed to handle, is those smaller storms. We still need capacity even for those.
I was just, you know, seeing a 500-year and a 100-year storm within less than 10 years of each other, 2007 and 2013.
Mm-hmm.
It makes me question, how are we judging our 100-year and 500? That's why I was asking that question, is how accurate is the data on what we're considering a 100-year or 500-year storm?
Every year we get is another year of data that lets us improve those models, but it's kind of like when you go to Vegas and you're betting on the roulette table. The storms don't have any, I mean, they do have memory, right? You're likely to get a bunch of storms together in the same week if it's all part of the same weather system, but what you get one year doesn't have anything to do with what you got the year before. So, your 1% chance this year is the same 1% chance next year. And if you're betting on your special number 21 every time of the roulette wheel, you have the exact same odds every time that wheel spins.
And regardless of the odds, the map will move forward in some fashion or another and that's the only thing that we have to control. And so, what mediation steps or advice do you need from council tonight to move forward with your due diligence?
Right now, there's no, there's no approval because the due diligence is what we do out of our professional obligations. Before we start moving dirt, we'll come back to you with some kind of a plan because we do need to have, say, JEO or a long-go vet what we're doing just to make sure, because sometimes those things, they may appear intuitively productive, but maybe there's something about it that isn't a good idea. We need to have some sort of a plan, but it'll be self-executed, so we'll present it so you guys know where we're at. But the idea is that, again, we're shortening down the period that it takes us to execute these and reducing the cost by doing the work ourselves.
And so, does the anticipation of these projects change anything in the CIP or MRF? Do we have the equipment that we need for these?
We have talked, I think we can execute the set that we have up there with the equipment we have.
There's always a rent option too, probably, so...
We have had a long wishlist item for an additional piece of equipment in the Public Works Department for the stormwater projects that would improve our efficiency. I don't remember if that's in the MRF for next year.
So, yeah, all these projects that we're looking at, we can do in-house now. We are looking at a full-size excavator. We did not have that in the CIP or MRF for next year. We have talked with Angela about potentially being able to move some funds with some of the budget stuff we've done to maybe not do state fair for next year and be able to use some of that funds to buy an excavator so that it would help us move these projects along faster. We can do some of this work with a mini excavator, but honestly, at that point, your man-hours and cost isn't worth it versus getting that bigger piece of equipment to knock it out.
And we have staff certified for all of that equipment?
Yes.
And the bigger equipment, like when it comes to Cow Creek, there are large parts of that project that there's dirt moving and the full-size excavator would really benefit us self-performing large portions of that, so that's really when we'll be getting bang for our buck, as you could say.
And after those projects would be completed, would we keep the equipment or would we sell it? Would we anticipate using it again? And you're probably thinking you'd keep it because...
It's actually a piece of equipment we've rented in the past to do other levy maintenance and stuff. So, if we did purchase it, yeah, it would be a piece of equipment that would just become handy to keep. Yes.
HT there saying, got a question I've always wondered about. In our levy system, we have big valves, am I right? There are big valves you close, right? Where does that water go when we open it up? Goes to Cow Creek? I mean...
So, we can close Cow Creek off from the city and divert it around the city. So, when we know we've got heavy water coming in or a rainstorm, we will close that so the capacity in Cow Creek for the city is there and we divert the water running from outside the city around the city into the arc. So, we can close those off at the Seventeenth Street structure where Cow Creek first comes into town. We can also divert again at Fifth Street structure, which would be the diversion canal. So, we can divert down the Harsha, we can divert down the diversion canal. And then the last structure we actually have in our system is, we have one out by the wastewater treatment plant on the GVI, which doesn't divert water anywhere else, but it actually closes the arc off from backföting into the city.
Okay. So, we control where it goes, you control it, right?
We can, to an extent. I mean, within the boundaries of those ditches and levees, yeah.
Okay.
And we test those and we know that they all work and...
Yeah, we exercise those more than monthly. I mean...
Okay. Thank you. Any additional questions or remarks from council? Just for transparency sake, can we get this put into the minutes?
Yes, it's a little large, so I had trouble emailing it, but I think we can, I think we can do it now. And any of the other people here or online or myself are available if you have questions later. I know it's a lot of information to swallow, but that's why I wanted to get out ahead before we had the draft floodplain map, so we were all aware of the consequences when they do get issued. So, if nothing else, thank you, guys. Appreciate your time and so much of it.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Report of city officials.
Mr. Garza.
Okay. Well, what I want to say is thank you, guys, for your patience and all that. Ms. Bernard's thing, I spent a lot of time with her. Unfortunately, it couldn't get done mainly because she didn't have the money. She was depending on grants and all that, but what's happened to us with COVID and everything, it just never, never worked out. So, I appreciate your time, I appreciate you putting up with me, but that's life, I do say what I think and whatever. And you guys are great for hanging in here tonight, look who we are. So, anybody who's going to be council people, think about that when you're going to be, get voted in here. It's a fun job at Thompson, it's kind of a pain, you know what I mean? So, thank you, Mayor. That's all I got.
Thank you. Richardson?
I would like to remind everyone that this weekend is the big Silver Crown Series races at the fairgrounds, Friday and Saturday. I believe there's some other events going on around the city that are shared with that. I'm sure it's all on social media, but I would encourage everyone to get out and see the races. That's all I have.
Mr. Bass?
I got a concerned citizen concerned about the entrances to the city needing to be ditches mowed. And when we got down to really what was happening, it was a county issue. But I, you know, just be aware that people notice when they come into city, into the city, even if it's a county ditch along Fourth or Fifth, they just assume it's the city. So, if we could maybe ask Randy to look at that a little closer or, you know, for the county to help us there. And also, I've noticed that the police department has been patrolling Avenue A Park quite a bit in an effort to keep that park safe and make it more user-friendly. Chief, will you share what you, what you've been doing? I'm there many times a day driving by and it's amazing how many times I see police officers, you know, hanging out a little bit more.
Yeah, we actually spotted you there that one day, Lieutenant Vaughn and I parking over there. Yeah, we're just trying to make more of a presence down there in the park to make sure that the park can be enjoyed by everybody that goes down there. Actually, this coming Friday, Justin Combs, I don't know if he's still here, yeah, he left, but that's fine, we're going to make a walk through the park, him and I together. Justin Combs, Director of Parks and Facilities, to see how we can work together to collaborate to keep the park clean and free and inviting to everybody. By being able to see into the park, it allows officers who are driving by to see everything that's happening in the park, so it helps us better patrol the parks and keep it safe. And then officers are making more engagements, positive engagements down there inside the park to ensure people down there that it is a safe park and one that you can go down and everybody can enjoy together, so.
Well, thanks for your work and it wasn't just that day that I saw you and Les, but I think you're really making an effort and I appreciate it. Contingent patience with Woody Seat, it's progressing. And that's all I have.
Yeah, I was going to bring up the Silver Crown too. I think it's going to be a great event for Hutchinson this weekend. Chief, the, one thing I had, I had, I guess, an email from a citizen. How much firework did we have like late into the night, early morning? Did you give very many calls on stuff like that? I had somebody that fireworks going off at 1:45 in the morning. I mean, I know that's going to happen, but I just didn't know how, how that was across the city.
Yeah, I wouldn't know the exact numbers. We could get that for you as far as the number of fireworks complaints. I would, I would not say it's unusual. It was par for the course for the most part. We did have some nights that were a little bit heavier than others, but as far as the law enforcement side goes, yeah.
I was going to ask you, did you get any sleep, chief?
Them five days and the 10 days of the state fair, there's no sleep. So, but getting to your point here, there was 81 calls, firework complaints in the city this year, which is on par what we usually have, so...
Any major events or pretty minor?
We had four dumpster fires for us, a couple of grass fires in town here, small ones, and a couple other issues, but nothing, no garages, no homes, no nothing like that, so...
Well, thanks for all that, all of you did over the holiday weekend, so make it safe for all of us, so...
Chief Beer, would you say, so you said it's comparable, sorry, I tried to walk off. You said it's comparable to years past. Is it comparable to last year when we had, because this ordinance is only two years old now?
Yeah, I've seen the last three years and it looks pretty much all the same for us, a number of calls. And the calls are split between fire and police responding to them, 81 calls. And the biggest thing here is, you know, especially on the Friday night, when we have the holiday weekend, the longer one compared to the week, there's more get-togethers, more alcohol involved. And so, we see a little uptick of citizens that get a little perturbed, their neighbor calling. And I always say that when we're on the radio or RVR, is get to know your neighbor. Have that conversation beforehand. If you have a pet, that's one of the biggest things, the dogs are going nuts or something like that. Just get to know your neighbors, have that conversation beforehand instead of, you know, calling 911 and complaining about it.
Yeah, thank you.
Here, I have a question. Do we have a timeline on our, when we shoot the fireworks at night, they supposed to set it off at?
11 o'clock at night, yeah.
And our ordinance, and I believe South Hutch's is the same, that there were only five days that you could set them off in the city limits. So, the state law that was passed that would allow year-round firework sales, it requires a permanent structure. There is one in Reno County that may be eligible, Shaw Alter just over in South Hutch. I don't know if they intend to stay open year-round or not. I know they use that building for other things too, I think, but, so, yeah, there may be additional fireworks set off in town down the road. Are they not?
I'm sure Thursday's not going to be...
They're not going to, okay. So, we won't have any permanent?
We have none right now.
In Reno County?
None right now.
Awesome, okay. Okay. I did know about the four trash bins. Mr. Vegas and I met with, and the names are escaping me, but we met with the guys from Stittsman's Refuge. They had great things to say about the city. They're big supporters of not only city staff and council, but also events around town. We did talk about whether or not a resident could move to kind of a pay-as-you-go trash pickup model and put their dumpster out every once in a while instead of every single week and be billed for four pickups or five pickups a month. And they said that that doesn't really fit with their business model because so often they don't know whose dumpster is whose, especially with the amount of alleys that we have in town. So, perhaps it would be possible in the future, but right now they just don't have that capability or that capacity. Had a good series of emails about additional lights at Farmington Park. It sounds like those will be moving forward, essentially adding additional lights to existing poles throughout the park, kind of around the perimeter. And then, once those lights are up, the city will go back and revisit to trim the trees to allow for the best illumination from those trees. Trimming the trees beforehand would be premature, so they're going to do it all after the installation and we don't know that timeline yet. Mr. Vegas shared an interesting email with me about certification pay, which is a recent new initiative for city staff, essentially... essentially encouraging them to get additional certifications. Waste, for the wastewater folks have done a number of testing to get certified.
Correct, and and I would add Dayton is going back to school. He is pursuing an engineering degree. So while Dayton may be new to the role, he's not new to the city. So there's cer, we have plenty, we have a plethora of employees now that are taking advantage and pursuing further education.
Awesome, I love that. I have had some complaints about scooters in town. Chief Burley, if you could come back up here. What are the, and maybe Paul could answer this, too. What, what's with the scooters and where can you ride them and? Not e-bikes, but like the electric scooters.
They follow the same rules of the road as as any other thing, like a bicycle would. They have to obey the same laws and and the same thing everybody else does. So there really is no difference between an e-bike and a scooter. I'm assuming you're talking about like one of those ones you stand on?
Yeah.
Not a sit, sit-on scooter, yeah. Same rules of the road apply to them as as anybody else, yes.
So as far as like giving them clearance or space, like, do you treat them as a bicyclist?
Yes.
Okay, because they don't have blinkers and whatnot and no helmet requirement, or they can go on any street besides highway, essentially?
Correct, correct.
Okay, yeah, it seems like there's been a lot more around town. I assume you don't have to have a driver's license for those either.
No, you don't. Yeah, it's, it's, yeah, just kind of compare it to a bicycle. It is about the easiest way to do it. There is a few little nuances to it, but for the most part, it's just like a bicycle, so, yes.
So they should be in the street, not on the sidewalk?
Correct, yes.
The other thing is, a while back, we had talked about Avenue A Park building being converted into a police station, substation. Is that something, as you guys are having conversations around enforcement and making more contacts there, is that something that you guys think would be beneficial? I did see that it is our lowest income-generating rental building, which I know is outside of your purview, but.
Yeah, we're still, as the staffing levels move up, I I guess I could announce, too, that I think, I don't know if we've talked about it, that we're actually at full staff. It's a pretty proud moment for me. It's, I've been there for a long time. Yeah, yeah, it's really, really cool. It's something that's, I just can't, I can't speak enough about. It just makes me really happy, because what that does is, as our numbers pick up and we get the officers through the training, it does allow us to take on more specific jobs in the city that we want to see happen. You know, different areas getting cleaned up and and more law enforcement involvement, where before we just have to focus on just the crimes itself and that, because that's what took up all of our time. So we are at that full staff, however, we still have a lot in training. So I would see maybe in potentially eight or nine months. We are evaluating, looking at developing a community resource officer, so that's somebody that's involved with homeless, drugs, and somebody that can attend all those meetings. And it's, it's an officer that understands the full picture here, what's happening in Hutchinson, and not one that's just going to the homeless or one that's going to the drugs or to the mental health. Because they're all, they're all kind of intertwined, and so we are looking at doing something like that that will keep us better involved with all those different types of organizations and can help us make the best decisions possible with where our resources need to be utilized at.
Okay, thank you. I had a complaint, and I saw for myself that we do have high grass growing in the taxiway and the runway at the airport, so I would encourage enforcement on that as we're talking about the entryway to the city. That is the entryway for some people. It's also important to make good on our promises, to maintain our own property in the same manner that we enforce upon others. And then the last thing is Evan and I had a good conversation about 11th and K-61 today. I had asked to explore a footbridge over either 11th or 17th, whatever makes sense, and kind of leaving that up to engineering to figure that out in the next two years to put that into the CIP. And then that kind of turned into a, you know, maybe there's room to pursue K-dot grants to make, to essentially redo the whole intersection. And so I feel like that's a really good way for us to connect the the two sides of town, especially considering Walmart's one of our main grocery stores in town, and you can't walk there safely from even just a few blocks away. You have to cross K-61, which there's no crossing. So anyway, that's my, I believe that's all of my report. Go to the races, go to the Logan Myers concert. There's a lot, lots to do this weekend. Mr., oh, November meeting date change. Is it the 19th, 4th?
Whatever the chamber date was, I just wanted to put that bug in your ear.
Yeah, so the Chamber Annual Meeting is November 19th, I believe. We have a council meeting that night.
Eighteenth.
Eighteenth, okay, and we have a meeting that night. So we can move our meeting, we can meet in the morning, we can not meet.
What? I just can't help myself.
We could not meet, and we could all go to dinner at the chamber event.
What'd you guys see last year?
No meeting.
No meeting, okay. I would say we could also just kind of leave it open and play it by ear. We could cancel the meeting as a kind of a working idea, and then if something pops up that we need to address, we could set it for a 9:30 or 9 o'clock meeting that day. I do think it's important that we are represented at the, at the chamber meeting.
You want to do it after the chamber meeting?
No.
Okay, just checking.
No.
I say we just kind of tentatively see how things go.
Okay, okay. Mr. Vegas?
Chief Beer or Burley or both, could you talk about Katie and her onboarding and just get them up to speed?
Yeah, so Katie McDonald, our new social worker for the first responders, is, I guess, in full swing at this point. She has began group sessions with our first responders, meeting with them in groups so they can get to know her a little bit and just start to build that trust between the social worker and the first responders. It started out very well. I'm waiting back for a report from her on that to give me a little bit more feedback on how those initial sessions have started. But we're hoping to complete those here, I believe, in the next couple of weeks. And then, once those are done, start looking at the, meeting with them individually. So really, she's really, I'm really proud of her because she's jumped right in and has taken the reins and ran with it. She's the professional in that world, so we were looking for somebody like that that would come in and kind of tell us, hey, this is probably the best thing we can do to help their mental health, and she's done that very well. So a big thanks to Mr. Vegas and all of you for seeing the need for our first responders to have good mental health. It was something that's kind of long overdue, I think, in this country in general. I think we always knew that their first responders suffered from poor mental health, but we just really never did anything about it. And I'm really proud of the city that they, we recognize that and then are giving us the tools to keep our people healthy mentally. As you saw, maybe the unfortunate incident with, that happened with the Wichita officer, that's not uncommon in our profession. It just, that one hit closer to home, and I think just made me feel even better that we're doing something to really try to protect our people from that happening, so.
Do you know, are there any other police departments that have a social worker on staff?
No, no, we're the only one in the state of Kansas that I'm even aware of that's doing this. So that, that's, you know, that's that special side of what we're doing here, that that we're recognizing our people, we're valuing our first responders and trying to keep them healthy. Big agencies, metropolitans, you know, Denver's, Dallas's, places like that, they have them on staff, but outside that, I'm not aware of anybody that does what we're doing here.
I knew that, I just wanted you to say it.
Yeah, all right. And I'm happy to say that.
I would add to the success so far. There was a first responder that had went to HR and was noticeably distressed and was crying. And HR was able to share with them, hey, make sure you go to Katie and talk to her. They came back like, wow, that was amazing, and they started telling all the other first responders like how, how healing it was for that. And so I, just more success stories and looking out for the whole care of our employees.
We've talked for years about doing that, even before I was on council. There was always this talk. And I'm so thankful that we've done it.
I I think just the grotesque things that I know you guys get called out on and Fire Department gets called out on, that you don't know when you're on your way down there what you're going to see, and then you, you definitely need that help to to process it, and I'm glad that we have this resource now. Is this something that will be written into policy regarding required visits after certain types of events or certain types of interactions or infractions or anything like that?
Yes, and we're actually currently working on a policy. We're trying to find a policy that works for 911 Communications, HPD, and HFD. Katie started to bounce those policies over to me. There is a kind of an unwritten rule that they will be doing that until we get those policies in place. But, yeah, so we want this to be proactive and not reactive. That's what we're trying to uncover the problems before they become an actual problem. So those are what we're looking at doing. So we can recognize a major event when a major event happens, but it's the the day-to-day grind that we don't always see as something that's wearing somebody down, that Katie's going to be responsible to make sure that she uncovers that and helps them through that before it does become that issue, so, yes.
Good.
Yeah.
And so, future reporting on this, I'd be curious to see in six months or in a year if we could get some anonymized data of number of hours that she's spent in group settings or in single individual sessions with folks. And if you have any success stories you could share with us, I think that always goes a long way to justify a new position and and to really show the impact. But also, like you said, we're the first city who is is doing this, and I want this to be something that other cities can look at and say, not only is it working, but we can just take Hutch's policies and rewrite them for us and and implement something similar. Because there is a need for mental health support for first responders across the state and everywhere, too.
Yes, and we are working on metrics or gathering the data that will, because I want to be able to show and support and prove that this is actually successful, you know. The city's making an investment into this. We need to be able to show that it does work and and how it works. The crux to this specific job role, though, is social work. She's providing mental health support, and there's that trust and confidentiality part that we have to make sure that we keep safe, and we don't violate that part. But there is going to be ways to where we can still maybe with the person's permission, share some success stories, but if not, at least show it through the data that it's working, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, chief. I will invite Jessica up for a website update.
Excuse me, ma'am, what's your first name? Joanne, welcome to the city council meeting in Hudson, Kansas.
I have snacks, if you need some.
Good evening, council. Jessica Woodyard, Public Communications Manager, and also oversee the website. So we had the request to make some updates to our website about giving access to where projects are happening, what large projects are going on around town. And IT, along with Public Works and Engineering, has put together this map for us. So I want to show you a little bit of how it works. It's not currently live on the website. It soon will be. It's just receiving its final updates here. Okay, so you can see over here that we have six projects that are currently in construction. You can see the different project types, and over here you can see all of the different projects that are currently listed. So this is really intended for larger projects that are going on. It can also show projects that have been completed or projects that are in the CIP going forward. But a really cool feature that Tyler added. I click down here on Woody Seat, and it takes us to Woody Seat. If I click on here, it gives the project description, along with lots of information of what's going on with the project. Not only that, but we can click on these files and get a little bit about the project here. Another feature on here, we can go to the time lapse of the project. So for those who didn't know, Woody Seat does have time lapse on it, and that's on our website as well. It was just made easily accessible through this project tool here for residents to use. So it's an evolving project, but like I said, we really do hope to keep current large projects and projects around the CIP involved in this. So it will soon be on our website under Engineering, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up is Todd.
Todd Davis, Director of IT. I also wanted to talk about something that came up the other day, and that was a discussion on the, the updating the parks pages. And the tool that we use, the website, has a park tool that that is included, and that's kind of the way we have our, our parks and playgrounds listed. But, so I don't really have the ability to go in and change this page much, but we wanted to augment the capabilities to somebody who was interested in a specific park. So we used George Pile Park, the one right across the street, as a, as our test. And we flew that with, with our UAS systems and created an interactive model where you can go in and actually see the park. And not only can you see the park, I can use my mouse or I can use my finger on the screen and click and drag. I can zoom out and and kind of see, okay, this is the available parking, or, you know, I can see that, oh, there's a tree. But, you know, I can see there's a bank nearby, or this is near Memorial Hall or whatever. So I can zoom in on the details on, on a park, and you really get a nice granular view of what amenity is there. We're going to, this, this was a test, and we hadn't had the ability to do a little bit of cleanup work around the edges. But basically, what we're going to do is coordinate with the park department, have them go through, kind of clean up an area, then we're going to go fly it and create maps like this for, for, for other playgrounds and parks. And then, when I showed this to the department heads, they're like, okay, can I use that for, to, you know, to do like the wastewater treatment plant? So I could, you know, have a 3D map of, you know, be able to show somebody what's going on at the wastewater treatment plant. And so we're looking at augmenting this technology and using it in other things other than just, you know, being able to show a playground or whatever for, with it. And so that, that in my mind is, is really cool, and and it looks awesome. So it looks, you know, it looks like we know what we're doing, anyway. So we always, we always like that. Another thing that we're doing, if you want to switch the TVs over, if you notice out here, there's a TV out, out in the foyer. And in my mind, that's always kind of a, you know, it just sets her off all the time. So what I did was I created a, what, basically, a foyer. sets her off all the time. So, what I did was I created a, what, basically, a foyer digital sign. And so, what we've got up in one corner is the, the videos that show the percent of your tax money, or they, they show the revenue-neutral video, or they will, you will be able to put whatever videos we want in a playlist on there. And then, another section shows like news. You know, if, right now, it's pool season, so here's how you put in, here's how you put in a pool. At the bottom, it shows what's, what's gonna be meeting in this room next. So, you can see that the city council meeting is, is coming up to be in that room soon, or the, there, you know, there's gonna be a, a Human Relation Commission meeting coming up, or whatever, in the room. And then, you can take a picture of the, of the QR code with your phone, and that'll connect you to our website, to our Facebook page, and to our YouTube pages. So, that, anybody that comes into the building, and, you know, especially if there, if there's a queue line there, they can go walk over there and watch, watch the video. And we're looking at maybe adding this to some other locations around, around town. So...
I, I had to tell Todd, I'm like, man, you leveled up. So, this is pretty cool.
Yeah. We, we get to be involved in some cool stuff, that, you know, we got to 3D print the, the map you saw earlier, and we're gonna do a bigger version of that. And, and, you know, so we kinda got our mitts in everything right now.
The problem is, when you're good at your job, then it creates more work. And now, you have to do the plant, and now you have to do everything.
Well, the, we're not doing anything that costs a lot.
Oh, yeah. Yeah.
You know, it'll take me 15 minutes Monday morning to go through and update those, you know, the, the signage. And, and, you know, you start a print, and then it runs for 12 hours, and you, you don't care. You know, it's just, it just finishes on its own. So, it's not adding any labor, really. You know, a little bit of filament here and there, but, yeah. What's that? That thing probably didn't cost $12. Yeah. Yeah. So, he, he spoke out of turn. You're not supposed to speak from the audience, because I was gonna yell at all of you people for allowing that. No. But, any questions? No. You wanna go home? I do, too.
I was supposed to have one more guest come up, but I think we lost Joshua.
Yeah.
So, Joshua, he's our new intern, whereas he has split duties with Randy Partington, the county administrator, and then myself. So, he'll be with Randy for about a month and a half, or two months or so. And then, about every other month, he'll be ping-ponging back and forth, kinda working on special assignments and other, other duties as assigned.
For a year?
For a year. So, I'm excited about it. I've never actually had an intern before. So, it's good to get his feet wet and kind of see what he thinks about local government. And I think in, in closing notes, I, you know, in, in working day in and day out with the staff, I kinda know, like, what goes into even these presentations that we have for you all. But for the community at large, when there are complaints of, why is it taking X so long to get done? Well, the employees that are planning to present are also the same employees that may have to tackle this. So, it's, everyone is stretched very thin when it comes to game planning for how to deal with floodplain map changes, or whatever the case may be. So, I do appreciate the community's patience. It's certainly not, we don't like to stall or don't care. But, there's only so few of us, and you never know, it's gonna come in on a Monday or Tuesday. That can change your week. So, that's all I have.
I moved to adjourn.
Richardson?
Yes.
Garza?
Yes.
Bass?
Yes.
Eggers?
Yes.
Goss?
Yes.